So, good morning, everybody. Welcome to Monday, March 4th. I hope everybody had a great weekend, and we're going to be starting off this council meeting with a public hearing, and we're going to turn to the Director of Corporate Administration to read aloud the notice.
Thank you. As required by the Local Government Act, a public hearing is being held at this time to hear from anyone who may be affected by the proposed changes to the city's zoning bylaw. The proposed amendment in bylaw number 4161 is to rezone the property located at 1405 100th Avenue from C4 Commercial Service Zone to RS2 Residential Single Duplex Zone, and there were no written responses received.
Excellent. Thank you. And so on that, then we'll look to the gallery if there's any comments. Calling a second time. Calling a third. And seeing none, then we will close our public hearing. And with that, we will go to the regular meeting for March 4th. Call that to order. We're going to start with new council business. There is none on the agenda, but --
I just have a quick --
Counselor Wilber?
Sir, we didn't have a meeting until just before, so I didn't get on the agenda. But it's just regarding Community Cleanup Day, so that is set for May 11th, and as of March 8th, we'll start taking registration for groups that would like to get involved in that. The 5th Annual Swap and Shop will also be on May 11th at the Memorial Arena. And again, the Rotary Clubs of Dawson Creek are going to assist us from May 6th to May 7th, so picking up any yard debris and stuff for our seniors or special needs members of the community. And they can start registering as of March 8th. And so thank you to the Rotary for doing that for sure. And then with the school visits for Cleanup Day, we're actually going to have Peace Country Toyota partnering with us again, as well as the forestry will be coming with us because it's tree awareness. So, thank you to them. And I just want to say that I enjoyed all the sessions at the LGLA and networking with the other municipalities, and I learned a lot, so I'm glad I went. And hopefully next meeting I can do a little write-up of both of them. So, that was my little blurt for the morning.
Good. Thank you. Anything else anybody wants to report? Counselor Parsland?
I guess I want to report a frustration. Something was sent out through -- by Northern Health that got under my skin. It's -- and I don't know if we can do anything, but essentially the investigation of setting up a helipad at the Fort St. John Airport -- Fort St. John Hospital.
Hospital.
And so many of my friends raised a lot of money that was going to go into a helipad here, and they would stymied all the way by Northern Health. And I think it's great that there's going to be possible -- a helipad at Fort St. John Hospital, but I just want to verbalize my frustration that blocking that went on, seeming blocking that went on for the helipad has been established here in Dawson Creek.
Sure. So, one thing on that, I did notice that same report. I am going to be looking into that because the motion, as I understand it, that came from the Peace River Regional District was the investigation to be done for Dawson Creek and Fort St. John. Because I was quite vocal at the meetings that we already had one. And so I did bring that forward. I was told that when they did the investigation, it would be for both. That report came out and said it was for Fort St. John, so I'm going to follow up on that.
Well, thank you. That's great, because I don't want to block -- be blocking anything for Fort St. John, but I think we have the need as well, and --
Well, if they're going to be investigating, look at both, right?
Yeah. Thank you.
So. Sorry, did I see another hand go up? Counselor Kenny?
Yeah, I just -- I didn't do a report, but I just wanted to comment on the LNG Conference that I attended with the mayor and Counselor Schuman. And it was just amazing, the information that came out of that. And the lead players in the natural gas industry that were at the table, and what everything we hear in the newspapers, and that we're actually sitting there, listening to the presidents of Shell and in Canada, everybody talking about it, and listening to the companies like Mitsubishi, et cetera, like from China and Korea and -- what is that? China and Korea and Japan.
Japan.
And Japan. And they're up there showing the roots from Rupert to Japan and Korea and China. And the process that they're doing, that their preparation for building and getting ready for liquid natural gas being transported over to Asia. And so it really brought it to reality for me, hearing that right from the horse's mouth. It was pretty amazing.
Yeah, it was a good conference. Counselor Malkinson and then McFadden?
Sure. Good morning, your worship. Things have been well. I just wanted to let council know publicly that I've become a member of the Kiwanis Group. Cheryl recognized that at the last meeting, but I suppose I just mentioned it publicly.
Good for you.
Thanks, dude.
Okay, Counselor McFadden?
Just a question about the LNG, your worship. What are they talking about in terms of construction, completion, production? Is that like a long, long way down the road or fairly soon, do you know, or have they said?
Well, every company had different timelines based on the export licenses that they had received. One of the companies has already received their export license. What I can say is that all the companies that were there said sooner rather than later, because if we don't do it here, we're going somewhere else. There was somebody there from Australia who said, "The longer you take, the better it is for us." And so these same companies are already starting to purchase land and look at deals in the United States to export out of there if it doesn't work in B.C. So, the ones that did have the export license said their plan is by 2015 to start construction to be open by 2017. So, it gives you an idea.
Thank you.
Can I just add one more thing? Yeah, and it just, you know, it really created the urgency. And like, we think we have, like, we hear about the huge gas play that we have here in B.C., but when you look at the big picture all over the world, you know, we're a small percentage of it and big competition with the states, Australia, and Mozambique
-- Mozambique.
Mozambique, Africa, like, that are right there in the forefront as well. And so I think that, I think our government's doing a good job, you know, in promoting, like, the liberal government. And I'm not doing party thing here, I'm just --
[laughing]
Just on the activities that we've all heard, you know, in the papers, and we've heard the premier speak, and all the work that's being done is really good for British Columbia, and that really hit home for me at that conference.
Which will really affect this area, obviously. Good. Okay, thanks for all that. If nothing else, then we'll move on to minutes. We have a couple of sets of minutes under 3-1 from the public hearing and from the regular meeting of council. So Counselor Malkinson, seconded by Counselor McFadden. All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. And was there any business arising that anybody needed? Okay, so seeing none, we'll go to correspondence. First item under correspondence is 5-1. This is a letter from Fort St. John asking if we will sponsor their airshow. Counselor McFadden?
For information, your worship.
Seconded by Counselor Malkinson. Any discussion? Just one thing I'll highlight, maybe, if that's one of the questions. We used to have a reciprocal agreement with Fort St. John that when we were hosting airshows, that they would sponsor ours and then we would sponsor theirs. It was just kind of a mutual thing to support each other. And the last couple of years now without, with us not having an airshow, I don't think it's a good use, as much as we wish them the best of luck. And a lot of people who are really excited about that are probably going to go to sponsor the airshow. I agree with this one. Anything else? Okay, so all those in favor? Anyone opposed? It's carried. 5-2 is a letter from the ARC requesting donations of swim passes for their hockey tournament. Counselor Parsland?
We will receive this for information.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Wilber. Any discussion? Counselor Wilber?
Would this not be something that they would apply for under our grants program?
Typically, something like this would be, yeah. But Jim?
Through your worship, it's obviously not timely in that regard. It is, but it is a money item. It's about, well, we don't know the breakdown of how many of these participants would be youth and how many would be teen, but if they were half and half, you're looking at about $425 for the request.
Yeah. Counselor Malkinson?
I'd like to speak against the motion. I think it'd be a good event, and these people are going to be at the multiplex, I believe. And I think it would be, I think it would be good.
Yeah. No, I agree that it would be good. My concern is, this issue is a little different than some of the other requests coming forward, and I think you're going to start the ball rolling in the sense that, okay, so why not the year-end minor hockey free passes, minors hockey free passes, now all the skaters? Maybe we'll give free passes to the swim club so they can go swimming. You know, at some point, we need to be careful with the precedents that we're setting. So, Counselor Parsland?
Your comments reflect my thinking exactly. But I was wondering, you know, we did get in these requests, might it be helpful first to strike up a policy on this so that we just have a way of responding that's consistent?
I'm trying to think of the policy right now, says it comes to council for decision, but --
Well, yeah, I know.
Which puts us in this, yes.
Yeah. But it seems to me we need to have some consistency in dealing with these requests, and a policy might be helpful. That's the intention of policy.
Yeah, no, exactly. Jim, is there, am I mistaken? So there actually isn't a specific policy other than going to council for consideration, right?
Well, actually, there's --
Or to the grants.
Quite an involved policy about grants, and this would be a grant that defines the time when you have to make that request and the criteria about which council will evaluate it. The problem is, most of the community groups get this idea and send you a letter, and we refer to them that it's not compliant with the grant policy, but they still want you to consider it. So, I don't know that there's ever a way that you will prevent these letters coming to council.
Yeah, thanks.
And, of course, I need to point out that you don't always turn them down either.
No.
So if I was one of those groups, I'd be sending you a letter regardless of what the policy says.
Thanks. Counselor Wilber?
That's the reason I was asking. I'm just wondering if maybe we shouldn't send them a letter saying that though we appreciate them writing something, but we, there is a process, and in the future, could they please apply through the grants program? And that's just one more group that we've reiterated that that's our process.
I think we can capture that in the letter. Brenda?
Yes, of course.
Okay. Any other discussion then? Okay, so all those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried. 5-3 is a letter from Mr. Poppy, and this is regarding special occasion permit for their grad reunion. Counselor Schuman?
I would move that we work with the grad reunion to grant them permission to have their party at the memorial and have it there.
Okay. Seconded by Counselor Malkinson, sorry, McFadden?
Sure.
Both nodding over there.
McFalkinson?
Any discussion?
McFalkinson.
All those in favor then? Opposed? It's carried. Jim?
I just have to wonder how it's possible that Ray Poppy, who was a novice player when I first ran into him, can possibly be having his 10th year at a high school reunion. I must have missed a decade there, all asleep.
I was going to say something, but it come across as an insult, so I won't at this point. Okay, so we'll move to, sorry, 5-4, and this is a letter from the Dawson Creek Literacy Society requesting support around a decision made for funding cuts. Counselor Schuman?
So recognizing that this is a very important group in our community, I was wondering if council would support a motion to forward a letter to the Ministry of Education expressing our dismay at the funding for literacy programs in B.C., more particularly in the Peace Region being cut.
Seconded by?
Absolutely.
Okay. Any discussion? Jim, thank you.
Through your worship, the response you're going to get from the Ministry of Education is that they didn't cut funding this year?
I know.
The reason you're going to get that response is they cut funding last year, and the Dakota Society had enough in reserves to cover the first year of the funding cut. So really, if you're interested, you should be asking the ministry to return funding to the previous level. It's not true that they cut it this year, they cut it in a previous year.
Yeah. And of course, they just finished doing all their budget hearings, going around to the communities, asking for what we wanted and changes. And so that will be the other part of the letter is, we came to your community and you didn't ask for this. So. But, what have we done in the past on these, Jim? Has it been here and there? Because usually, we don't look at doing things, I guess unfortunately, at an advocacy role, and we're looking at cutting services ourself and recognizing the provincial government's dilemma.
Through your worship, I believe you sent a letter of support when they originally applied for funding, the local literacy society applied for funding for Legacies 2010?
Yes, last year we did.
I believe you did, yes. So you have supported this particular initiative in the past?
Okay. Counselor Schuman?
So we could reword that to just say that we want it to return to original funding and that we're dismayed with, you know, losing this group, this group in our community, in our communities.
Communities, yeah. And I don't know if it makes a deadline, but these are the kind of things as a council to always keep forefront when we're talking about doing resolutions to NCLGA and UBCM and things like that, just not to throw that out there as a reminder because a lot of times we forget about that, that part of our advocacy role is around resolutions to try to lobby the provincial government, and that's always quite effective. Well, sorry, what's effective is sending in the resolutions. What, the outcome of the resolutions isn't always effective.
So are you suggesting that we --
I don't know if we made the deadline or not, because it didn't, actually, it's on --
I don't think so. I'm not sure.
It's right around now. But anyway, it's something to consider.
I think we're sticking to that.
I thought last meeting, we got the notice of resolution deadline. I just can't remember if that was March 1st or somewhere else in March. Counselor Schuman, you don't remember from the executive?
Yeah. I believe it was March 1st.
Okay. So for now, I won't try to change the motion, but anyway, it's something to keep in mind when we're doing other motions like this. So, Counselor Wilber?
I just want to add too, regarding this program, is that we're unique, is that this program really outreaches to the immigrant workers that are being brought in in all our different communities and embracing their families and helping them with English as a second language and incorporating in our communities. And I think it's imperative that we put that in our endorsement letter, that this, that really is important to our communities and that we need that program just for that reason.
Okay, any, yeah, no further comments. So, all those in favor then? Anyone opposed? It's carried. 5-5 is a letter from the Dawson Creek Society for Community Living. This is a request for sidewalk construction on the corner of 14th Streets, 102nd, oh, sorry, for 14th Street and 102nd Avenue.
I will leave the --
Oh, yes, thank you. Counselor Parsland, I couldn't remember if he was still on the board, so.
Oh, yes.
He said, "Oh, yes," with enthusiasm.
No, no, don't.
Okay, so, we have this request here. I'm not sure if somebody wants to make a motion or if you'd like information, possibly from staff first prior to a motion, because one thing I can say is that they have applied for this exact same sidewalk two or three times in the last four or five years. And we have a process, but maybe I'll turn things over to Jim.
Yeah, through your worship, I actually think this is just their second request, although they sent you a letter not agreeing with your decision the last time they requested. The sidewalk priorities that are forwarded to you every year are based on a sidewalk condition report. That was commissioned by the city about five years ago, and that's been fueling your proposed works. In the case of this particular sidewalk, when it came forward the last time, you looked at an estimate of about $190,000 to do it. I don't imagine that's changed to do this sidewalk, and it would save a block. The sidewalk being proposed, as it was the last time, would run from 102nd Avenue to Alaska Avenue at Extra Foods. However, if you exit the other side of Extra Foods, there is a new sidewalk installed on 15th Street all the way to 102nd. So, the $190,000 would save the one block from 15th Street to 14th Street. There are safe and secure sidewalks for people to walk on, and when they get to the corner of 14th Street and 102nd, there's a solar lighted pedestrian crossing light to get to the same facility. So when you looked at the last time, it wasn't on your priority list, and $190,000 to save one block of walking seemed to you like a good expenditure, and I don't know, but it would have changed now. We couldn't recommend it administratively.
Yeah. Counselor Schuman?
So I'd move this for information.
Okay. Counselor McFadden is seconding. Thank you. More discussion then? Counselor Malkinson?
Your worship, I'm just a little confused. I've got a map here of the proposed works, and it appears that from 116th to Alaska, that sidewalk is supposed to be done in 2015. Am I, I'm wrong about that?
116th?
No, I'm talking 102nd to Alaska Avenue, 14th Street. That's what we're talking about here.
2015 or 2018, I can't remember which.
15.
It's out in the, it's out in the future.
It's in, yeah.
15.
Identified, but.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Well, maybe we ought to say that it is identified to get done in 2015.
Why not?
Again, I mean, everything's subject to change always. We have to remember that. But it is identified as being looked at. I just know it wasn't in the capital plan for this year, so. Brenda, that's okay with the motion?
Yes, I would put that in the letter.
Okay. Any other discussion then? So all those in favor? Opposed? It's carried.
Pardon? Capital of the mighty peace.
Okay, so not quite nine o'clock yet for delegations, so we have time for a few reports, possibly. Let's start, well, maybe one. We'll start with 7-1. This is report 13046 from the Chief Administrative Officer regarding the Gangnam Strategies Report. It's quite a lengthy, quite a lengthy report there and information from staff around this. Counselor Parsland?
Yeah, I'd like to just get my computer up here. Excuse me. Make a, there's a recommendation I'm just scrolling to. I'd like to split the recommendation, if I may. I'd like to move that report number 13-046 from the Chief Administrative Officer, Reganon Strategies Report, be received for information, and then end that motion, and I want to make another motion after.
Okay, so right now, it's just the report for information, because we have not received this report yet technically into the system, right? So.
Well, sorry.
Brenda, maybe? I'll just ask Brenda.
Through your worship, I would suggest that we receive it for discussion, if you want to discuss the report at all.
You want to discuss the report? We just want to receive it and make a different motion.
Well, really, I should have furthered. I'd just like to amend that. The report number 13-046 from the CAO, Reganon Strategies Report, be received. Further, the independent analysis review fair share funding report prepared by Gagnon Strategies Consulting be received. Period.
Period, yeah. So, okay. Okay, so seconded by anybody? Counselor Wilber? Any discussion around that motion first? Counselor Parsland?
Well, the reason I didn't say for discussion because I tend to concur with the CAO's reflections on the report, that I don't see anything in it that, from the point of view of the policy or the recommendations, that I could support for implementation at all. So, I guess I'm reflecting in this motion my disappointment, I guess, perhaps, in the report.
Okay. So Counselor McFadden?
I'm just curious, where the, the chief says the council work with staff result in an annual contribution of 2.75 million. I just not sure for that number. Is that, am I off target here?
Counselor Parsland purposely left that out, because I believe what he's asking is that council pass a motion that just says that we're in favor of receiving the report, and that's it. And then after we accept that, then it sounds like he wants to make another motion.
Okay, I see, yes, yeah.
So that last half of the recommendation has been stricken out.
Is done. Thank you. I'm sorry.
So if you want to speak, this would be the opportunity to speak to that then?
To the report itself.
Okay. I know there's been lots of discussion. We had the, had it last time. Counselor Kenny?
I just, I just want, through your worship, if Jim could just explain a little bit more about the, about the report, that you feel that it's not, so, no, I guess, what's missing?
Through your worship, when you look at the alternatives that are provided, none of them actually provides you with any kind of action plan. And many of them are, well, they're aspirational targets, like working with public-private partnerships or with First Nations. They don't, there's nothing in the alternatives that would actually, you could adopt and it would constitute a plan. And within the policy, the problem that I identify with the policy, proposed policy, is it doesn't change your expenditure habits in any way, it just rebrands them. And in a way that I think is particularly worrisome, which is to tie your core services to fair share. So the body of the report says that you are at some jeopardy of losing fair share, and then the proposed policy says the response to that should be to direct your fair share monies at core services in the, so the assumption there would be that if you lost fair share, it's core services that would be removed.
Yeah, not discretionary.
And I think that's the reverse of what you would be looking to do. So I just don't think the policy is useful to you. I don't think any of the alternatives function as a plan or a course of action that council put it out.
Which is why you put a recommend, the last half of the recommendation, which is not on the floor right now, but just so people understand whether they want to support the motion that is on the floor. That's why at a staff level, then you put the recommendation that there needs to be some course of action attached to this, so at least we have a plan going forward. Jim?
That recommendation, we could talk about separately, but it's not on the table right now. It was developed, the 2.75 million is a figure from the report, which is identified as a quarter of fair share. That's where the number comes from. And the reason for proposing some action is, I believe, the overwhelming sentiment in the public consultation was that you would take some action rather than none. So, that's just why the second part, which is now under consideration, was placed in the report.
Yeah. I just wanted to have that out there, because that could make a difference of whether you support the recommendation on the floor, because the recommendation on the floor have passed, there's going to be another one, I assume, because we have to have some action. If this one's defeated, then we can go back to the original motion as recommended, but that's, I just wanted to make sure council knew where we were at on that.
Well, I do kind of like the idea that, you know, that we would put this into the 2014 strategic planning process.
Yeah.
So, you know, because we still have to look at it.
Yeah.
It's not going to go away.
Yeah. So, so if I cancel, right now, the motion is just to receive the report, plain and simple, and then we're open for another motion after that, to see if council's in favor of that direction. I think Counselor Parsland, not to put words in your mouth, but it's just to divide it into two separate to make it more, more clear, right? So.
Is that, is that, okay.
We don't know what it is.
We don't know what the motion is?
No, that's right. But right now, for information, I don't know if anybody would have an issue with that, so maybe we'll just call the question on that. So all those in favor? Anyone opposed? It's carried. So right now, it's been received for information, but no direction as of yet. Counselor Parsland?
Okay. The second part here, which begins with the words "and further," I'll read it. The council referred to the 2014 strategic planning process, that council worked with staff consultant expertise as required, and the taxpayers of the community to identify service reductions and/or targeted tax increases which result in an additional, an annual contribution of 2.75 million dollars to a fair share stabilization fund.
Yes.
That portion, I am moving that we table that until That portion, I am moving that we table that until council has received a presentation from staff on the city's fiscal gap, which is a term that was, I've learned, I've learned from Jim. So, that's my motion, that we table that till we had a presentation from staff at a time appropriate to staff on the city's fiscal gap, which is independent of fair share.
But it's part of?
Yes, part of, yeah.
Yeah, so, is that seconded then? Counselor McFadden is seconding, and Jim, with that motion, what, how do you see that playing out? Because obviously, there's...
Well, through your worship, attached to this report is a little graph showing you the spending trends of the municipality since two thousand and three, and the trend lines there are not very encouraging. Expenditures are, are rising in a relatively straight-line fashion. Shelley and I would be happy to run you through a couple-hour workshop about why we don't think that's sustainable going forward, and actually, that's whether or not fair share funding remains in place. That trend line will overcome all revenue sources, if given enough time to operate. The term fiscal gap generally just refers to the fact that the revenues you're projecting out into the future don't equal up to the expenditures you're promising into the future, and so, either the promises can change, or you can explore other revenues, but we could certainly run you through a workshop around that, because although the specific recommendations in the Gagnon Strategies Report were not particularly attractive to administration by way of predicting action, they were a trigger for us to look at the spending trends and to say, the, they've identif, correctly identified a risk without actually giving you much instruction about how to handle that risk. So, yes, we'd be happy to run that for you. It would be, have to be timed after your extensive public consultation on water, because the outcome of that consultation is going to affect that trend line.
That's right.
It could actually turn the line vertical, like an elevator.
Definitely. No, I completely, you know, in reading through this, I completely support this direction. It's one of the things, you know, I talked with staff last week, that I thought, you know, we need to get more, we need to bring council up to speed, because councils, us, past, everybody has a hard time saying no, and it's something that we need to start identifying sooner rather than later. I mean, this fair share brings around the part of the discussion, but we need to put everything in the same basket and start looking at the priorities, where the city's going to be in five, ten years from now, and have a financial plan that goes with it that's appropriate and doable, so... Any further discussion on this then? Okay, so, all those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried.
I do have another motion.
Around this...
On fair share, yeah, on this topic. If it's timely, if you want me to wait until I do, it's fine.
If it's, it would have to be someone with the report and the fair share, so it's probably timely.
Well, I echo again what our CAO's comments, one of the pluses for the report was that, and in a way that I certainly hadn't been thinking, outlined with alarming clarity the implications to the city, should the fair share funding and how we had become, what's the word, we had taken this gift, this, which has been worked at hard by previous staff and our current staff, and we have been using it for operating, and if we were to lose that, how, some of the examples, like lose our funding for, it would equal the funding for our fire department, protective services, and all that stuff. So, I hope we're all alarmed by that, because I thought that was a benefit. And I'm going to make a motion that, I guess, is intended to put a, a break on things. So, the motion is that, and I'll read it slowly, that in addition to the two thousand and thirteen allocation of fair share funds to capital projects, all increases to fair share funds received by the city in subsequent years be allocated to capital projects.
Okay, obviously, that's the end. Seconded by Counselor McFadden. Now, unfortunately, I'm going to speak against this, because we just finished making a motion saying, before we get too deep into anything, we should have a meeting with, really looking at the fiscal gap, and now we're making a motion identifying what we want to do with some funds, and so, although I completely agree possibly with the intent of the motion going forward, in my opinion, it's premature saying that, in saying, in the direction that we want to go, we should wait till after we've had this meeting, in my opinion, to figure out where we want to go, but... Counselor Schuman?
Yeah, that was going to be my comment also, on one hand, saying we should wait before we make any decisions, and then turn around and make a motion, make any decision, so, I would be voting against that motion also.
Counselor Wilber?
I see them as two separate issues. We're waiting to make a decision on funding we know we have now, and this motion, I'm writing it down, it's hard to say in it, but is looking at the increase, not the actual fair share that we have now, but any increase in subsequent years, and I don't see a problem with saying that any new money would be put towards capital projects. I've, I see it as two separate issues.
Okay, but if I can, now, the reason why I don't see it as two separate issues is we just talked about that gap, and if we're going to start identifying that growth, how do we know that it's going to go to capital? When you read the report, there could be, the report suggests that maybe that increase go into reserves in case we lose fair share, like, there's so many different options, and for us to tie in to one now, which is contrary to some of the directions in what I'm reading from the report and from staff, so... Counselor Kenny?
Well, and with the fair share, don't we, do we not project an increase each, each year?
We do, provided that there's an increase in the oil and gas activity around the community.
Yeah, but we do kind of do, do projections.
Jim?
Through your worship, when fair share was originally the, the last fair share, the mega fair share in two thousand and five, when it was adopted, the growth projections that the province and the local area jurisdictions had agreed on was five percent per year. That was the assumption of what would, the growth would be. It's outperformed that largely because of pipelines. Pipelines come on fairly frequently and add to that assessment base, and so, it's outperformed those projections, the, which is, as you know, a sticking point with provincial government about the whole program.
Yeah.
However, those are all guesses. Yes, we do project increases. We run one year behind, so, this year's fair share is based on last year's assessment, and we know there was a lot of pipeliners working, so, yes, I do believe there will be an increase in fair share.
Okay, Counselor McFadden?
I think the motion gives staff some, some good direction on the direction that council may want to go with this in the future, and I would welcome them having that information that we're, we're looking at, what the motion calls for in the future. I'll be supporting the motion.
Okay, Counselor Malkinson, I'll finish off with Counselor Parslau. Go ahead.
Sure. Your worship, I do believe Counselor Parslau has the right mindset, I think it's important for that part of our budget, you know, that part of our, you know, to lessen that part of our budget, and to lessen the possibility of what many people see as a vulnerable position that we're in right now with regards to fair share, or the way that we allocate it. It's in the details, though, that I found uncertainty, you know, by proposing a cap on the future increases of fair share in operating, which is seven point seven million, I believe, right now. It's well-intentioned, I'm sure, but I don't think seven point seven million dollars will go as far in six years as it does today. Yeah, I think we ought to learn the implications of such a decision like this would have. You know, I'm not sure taxes will be enough to cover the gap that something like this would, something like this would cause, so, I, I think at the very least, we ought to have a staff report on the implications of this motion before we, before we go ahead with it.
Okay, Counselor Parslau?
Yeah, the, Colin Griffith, you may remember, when he gave a presentation on the history of fair share, did a projection of, I think it was eight percent on average to twenty twenty increases. When you compound that money each year, you're getting into the twenty million dollar range. The, I, I do believe that it is absolute folly, and I consider it an emergent thing, that we stop using increases, emphasize the word, increases in fair share in any way into operating. We have major, major expenditures, all of them capital in nature, sewage, water security, and we, all this money that I am talking about, these increases, which would average about, in round dollars, a million dollars a year, compounded until twenty twenty, and all that money I see going to deal with the strong need for capital funds to, to support them. And so, that's why I cannot let this Gagnon Strategic Report just go by without saying the, my response is, let's deal with our core infrastructure, we know we need the capital funding, and let's use it and not be tempted to gird up some things that we should be supporting through our, our core tat stuff. I, I noticed that this year, as an example, and I'm glad that people who went to the LNG conference come back excited and energized by that, because it will have positive spinoffs, but just this year, in answer to your statement, the latest budget sheets we have from our financial, chief financial officer show that just this year, the tax assessment has gone up for residential, the yield, three hundred and fifty thousand, the commercial, half a million dollars, other contributions, a hundred and fifty thousand. I don't see with what we know about this LNG project, any slowdown in that, in that trend, so that would be more than enough money to cover inflationary costs and staff increases, so, I, I believe our operating budget will be secure.
Okay, Counselor Kenny, and then I'm calling a question.
I'll be speaking against the motion, because I think we need to have, have the discussion, look at where we're going in the future. We, we have an idea on the projections, we can't hang our hat on the LNG, as I said, because of the competition with Australia and the United States and Africa, but I, I would like to, to have, have a process where we sit down, analyze this, and a serious discussion with presentations from, from our financial officer and staff, and then make a decision then.
Thank you. So, I'm going to call the question, because we've all had quite a few kicks at this.
So, what was the motion again?
The motion right now on the floor, I'm not sure if you want to read it back to me, is accurate?
That in addition to the two thousand and thirteen allocation of fair share funds to capital projects, all increases to fair share funds received by the city in subsequent years be allocated, allocated to capital.
Which, by the way, any future council can change, because... Okay, so, on that, all those in favor? Opposed? And it's defeated. Which means, though, Counselor Parslau, it might be timely to make the exact same motion after we've had the meeting. I mean, that's the, it might be exactly the right direction to go. I a hundred percent agree.
No, I need to say what I said, and that's the reason for saying it, because I believe in it passionately.
Yes, I know, so, good. With that, thank you for being patient. We're going to go into, I thought we'd only have time for one, it went a little longer than I thought, but we're going to go back to our delegations. We have delegation under six-one, we have Mr. Carlson in attendance, who's going to come forward, I believe, to address counseling. Good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah. Please feel free to just come sit up at the front.
Sure. Good morning. I haven't heard too big, I'm too small. Okay, good morning.
So, good morning, yes, thanks for coming in.
I'm Shane Carlson, and this is Detective Callahan, who came to assist me in this matter.
Good morning.
The reason I'm here is to protest the unfair treatment that I've encountered in the past treatment. First of all, I, in my opinion, I've been unfairly denied a water connection with my shop since two thousand and seven, stating that there was not enough water for fire flow purposes, and since then, from reading in the paper, I've discovered that there's been four more connections granted to other contractors, although I've been continuously denied. Secondly, in January, the city deliberately tried to close my company down. Okay? I have paperwork for everything. Last, the city refuses to give me the same terms as been granted to the other contractors that have received water licenses since I began applying. Okay? Now, your honor, I have nothing against mayor and council, but I need these problems rectified. I'm a small local company, I was born and raised here, and it seems as though I've been treated unfairly, and not in the same manner that the other contractors have. As Mr. Schu has pointed out several times, it's important to treat everybody the same. Now, that hasn't been happening. In two thousand and seven, I applied for water. At that time, it was Dawn, and what Dawn told me was that the city could not keep up to the fire flow purposes, so they would not grant another truck loading facility. Okay? It didn't matter where I was, he didn't ask that then. I didn't receive anything in paperwork then, but in two thousand and nine, I came to council. Okay? Now, when I came to council in two thousand and nine, I was denied a truck loadout station for fire flow purposes, because they were concerned at that time whether treatment facility would keep up to the water demand if there was another truck loading station put in. There was no mention of pressure, it was fire flow purposes, period. At that time, I was told there'd be no connections, nobody would receive a connection. So, as you guys are aware, in the spring of oh nine, I needed that to keep my company alive. So, I was informed that with a raw water connection, that has no effect on the treatment plant or on the treatment capacity of the city of Dawson Creek. Okay? As Mr. Schu has stated, it does affect the city's volume of water taken from the Kiskatna River, but that had nothing to do, there was no mention of that in two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten, or eleven. It wasn't until I read in the paper in January that they had exceeded. Up until that point, there's no comment about it. Okay? So, I purchased a property out there to have raw water, no effect on the treatment plant, and I was given a two-year term temporarily.
Yes.
So, I came back a year and a half ago, as you're aware, and I wanted to have that extended with, with no encumbrances, so I could take out a loan. It's impossible to get a loan if you only have two years. Okay? So, what did you guys say? No, not until the ethanol plant was in. No more water licenses, no more extensions, no more edding until the ethanol plant was in. All right? So, no loan. I can't take out a loan, I can't do anything. All right? That was a year and a half of October of eleven. Since then, at that time, now, I may be wrong, because my competitors aren't going to tell me who won't laugh, but at that time, there was Jerry's or Curtis York, and there was Blackwater. Now, upon reading the papers and doing some research, now, the connections belong to the Raw Water, All Clean, Swamp Donkey, and Curtis York. Now, I still don't have long-term connection, I still don't have financing, so when Shelley phoned and demanded a hundred and fifty thousand on January fifteenth, I didn't have the money. A hundred thousand dollar bill came in June or July of last summer, with no backup, a hundred thousand dollars demand on water. Kevin Henderson phoned me, I said, Kevin, I need paperwork. I don't care whether it was a mistake in how they read it, or a mistake in the meeting, I need paper. To just give me a bill for exactly a hundred thousand dollars means nothing. I need paper to back that up, I've never received anything. When Shelley phoned me in January, she informed me... To just give me a bill for exactly $100,000 means nothing. I need paper to back that up, I've never received anything. When Shelley phoned me in January, she informed me that because the loan was not old, she would not grant me any more time, sorry, the city would not grant me any more time to pay the money. I said, I need paperwork, I can't get a loan without paperwork. How am I gonna get money? I don't know what month it was from, I don't know what year it was from, I don't know if it's because they read the meter wrong, or if the meter was incorrect, or they did something wrong with it. Right? But, I was down to days. She informed me that if I didn't have it paid, by the 29th of January, I would be cut off. So I'm scrambling, I have no paperwork, and I have a big bill to pay with nothing to back it up, not even what year it came from, or what month it came from. So that left me in a bind. So I'm scrambling, trying to get money. Then, I was informed that the additional $46,000 bill that I received the first week in January, from the end of December cutoff, I was informed that if I didn't pay that as well by the 28th of December or January, I would be cut off. Now, in your own paperwork from the city, it states that you have 30 days to pay a bill, and if it's not paid, then you have to hand deliver something, and it's rejected within seven. So that would have been February 7th, to come up with the $46,000. I was forced to pay that by the 28th of January, and it really concerned me, I had to sell a truck to pay the bill. So it sacrificed my company, I had to sacrifice it, I had no choice. I was unclear on the intent, till I went out there on the 28th, and I noticed that the city had sent out a crew to dig up the ditch, to expose my connection. So they clearly made it obvious that their intent was to shut me off on the 28th of January, against their own policy. All right? Now, I'm looking at this going, holy smokes, why would this happen? Why is this going on? Then I read in the paper, on January 31st, that on January 11th and 12th, the other contractors had used so much water, it left the city with not enough water. Right? Okay, my question to the city is, did the city have enough water to fight a fire on that weekend? Did Pous have enough water to fight a fire on that weekend? Because I was denied since '09 for fire flow purposes. So if they had enough water, then obviously they're wrong. If they didn't have enough water, then the new connection should never have been granted, even with a new engineer throughput. Because if that sacrificed the city of Dawson Creek's ability to fight the fire, that has nothing to do with the volume of water sucked from the river on a daily basis. Because in your reports, you guys have four months of water between the river and between the city. So, that four months of water isn't gonna get to the city overnight in the fire. But if the treated water plant can't keep up, and the volumes were sucked down that low, that's completely different. What I'm looking for is to be treated fairly, the same as everybody else. I want a connection that's long-term, I want the encumbrances removed, so I can take out a loan. So if I get sprung with a new bill with no paperwork, I can cover it until I can get the paperwork. I don't want to have to sell a truck to have to pay for a bill with no backup, because I'm forced to, for the survival of my company. The extra three-inch line that I requested, I first requested that in September, March of 2010, for effluent water. I want effluent water at my shop, so I can have a truck load effluent water, and I can have a truck load raw untreated water. The city profits from everything. It takes the burden off the taxpayers, their taxes won't run. The treatment plant won't be burdened with the extra treatment of water. That's a big concern, Mr. Burney, people's taxes go up. If you have the money to pay them, that's different. But if you're running low, and you get a tax increase, as we've seen in newspapers, a lot of older people, a lot of people that are just skipping by, when they get a big bill, that affects them in a really negative manner. Now, what I'm offering is effluent water at my shop, I was applied in 2010. I've been denied the whole time, I want to be treated fairly. I want the encumbrances removed, I'm requesting that yet again, I'm requesting the paperwork for the $100,000 that I had to pay with no backup, that cost me the truck. I don't know if that was even legal. If I would have been turned off on the 28th or 29th of January, according to the paperwork, I don't know that it would have even been legal. But I could challenge them. Until I look at it from the other side, and I go, I can't afford to sit back and, because they're killing, I'm being squeezed out, and other people are being brought in. Now, I'm not demanding treated water, I'm not demanding potable water, I'm demanding, or I'm not demanding, I'm requesting effluent water. And I'm requesting the recumbrances, the encumbrances from the raw water be removed. Then, the city benefits in both ways. They get the water sales, but it has no effect on the plant, on the treatment plant, no effect on people's taps whether they have water pressure. The other thing that concerns me, and you guys can have the answers, because I can't even ask the questions, on that weekend in January, that they overused the use of the water, did that affect Pous', Pous's ability? Did it affect their water pressure? Did it affect the volumes in the reservoir at Pous Coop? Because they piggyback off your guys' assistance. So, these are questions that I can't go ask people. But I think the people should have the right to say, hey, this had a negative effect. What if this, you know, I don't talk to the mayor and council in Pous', but I'm sure you do, and you would know whether that affected their water. Right? So I mean, this is something that is another question, I'm not, I'm not asking.
I've added it to the list of all the questions you've asked in a moment when you're finished.
So, this is it. So now, I want to be treated fairly. I'm not asking for treated water, I'm asking for raw water, in which I can take out a loan. I want the same contract. I want the same ability to do business. Sorry, anyways, go ahead.
No, okay, thanks, thanks Shane. Turn it over to council if you have questions, as you know, just before you get into questions under seven six, we do have an opportunity to discuss this in further with staff, you know, this probably wouldn't be the appropriate time to start getting into a lot of the debates with Mr. Carlson and staff, and everything around some of the questions that came forward, but we can definitely talk about that. At this time, I want to know if there's any further questions of the delegation that will help council later on.
Just for clarification, Your Worship, thank you for coming in, Mr. Carlson. You, did I understand you just say that you were asking for a water hookup for effluent water?
Yes.
Where would that be?
To my shop at 120-116th. I put that in writing in 2010, that I would pay for all of the connection, all of the paperwork to go through.
It wasn't up and running at that time.
At that time, the reply, that's right, at that time, Mr. McFadden, the reply was that the infrastructure wasn't in place, and so on and so forth. But as soon as it was, they would look at the consideration. As I am the first one, to the best of my knowledge, that applied for that water, if I'm denied it, and it's given to somebody else, I'm gonna wanna know in writing why it was denied for me yet again, and given to somebody else. Because I want to mix the effluent water with raw water. Okay? That eliminates the treatment plant. All right? The effluent plant, you guys have already bought and are paying for. Right? The raw water, the cost of the raw water from the province has remained the same. So your costs on raw water haven't changed for as many years as I've looked at this. Your cost on effluent water, well, that's not my ballpark. What I'm offering is the ability to provide this service to industry without affecting the citizens, and helping pay for the cost.
So can I ask a question on that, Shane? If, as you know, the last two letters or responses you got from council were extensions on the present location, because you are the only person drawing on the raw water line. The other companies are in town, own property, inside the city limits, and we can actually work with those companies, control them within the city limits, right? You're the only person on the raw water line, so my, and the original, I'm trying to just go off memory, and we can discuss it later, but where I'm going with the question is, you want to use the effluent water down there, which was what council's original intent was, once the plant was up and running. But now you're asking to not only have that, but you want to keep the raw water one that council had only given you a two-year extension on, because our plan, I believe, the discussion at that time was to, once the effluent was up and running, we were gonna cancel that permit, and you could work here. So if, just bear with me for two seconds, so my question is, what you're telling me now is, the only way your company could operate is if you have both?
Nope. What I'm saying is, in order for the water in Eris, in order for me to continue operating, because I've had to drop, I've had to sell some stuff, is I need to take out a loan in Eris, and I need to further develop that. What I'm asking for on a connection of effluent water is to help offset the cost of what the city is already impacting. Okay? The effluent plant water, if I don't receive that, won't have any effect on my business.
But can you work on just the effluent and not the raw?
No.
Okay, that's, so this is an all or none kind of?
Well, can you, what, do you guys sell effluent water only to oil companies, and to all oil companies? Or do they want it mixed with fresh?
Mixed with fresh.
Pardon me?
Mixed with fresh.
Right. So, if you have a lineup of eight trucks at the effluent plant, and you have everybody with a fresh load of plant, what happens is the oil companies take way more fresh than effluent, because they can't be guaranteed the blix. All right? Now, all I'm offering is the ability for the city, I will buy effluent water from the city. And I mean, that's entirely up to you.
The immediate problem is pressuring the city, and transferring the quota.
This is, this is the, this is the other thing, Patrick, because he goes through all the paperwork. The immediate problem, as you guys are well aware, is to try and keep up with the treatment of the water coming out of the plant. Right? So the immediate solution is, in my opinion, let me take out a loan, give me the same connection rights that everybody else has, so that I can take out a loan and further sell raw water.
Sure. Jim, you, did you try to say something there, I'm sorry?
No.
Oh, okay, sorry, I thought you looked like you were ready to say something. Charlie.
Yeah, I just, I was with you all the way through your presentation, understanding, I believe I was understanding correctly, but you lost me at one point. And that's concerning the effluent water, something I'm not understanding. Are you, the effluent water, you, you plan to, you want to have access to effluent water, are you referring to the effluent water that goes through the, through the, through the plant, that the city established a partnership with Shell? What is stopping you doing that now?
If you, if you, I can go load from there, but if there's a lineup of eight trucks, and it takes roughly 45 minutes per truck to load, how many hours do you sit there and wait before you get a load? You can't, you guys, you can't expect an oil company, or any kind of a company, to pay seven hours of wait time for a truck to load. All right? So, when you guys have a peak demand for effluent water, or for fresh water, it will, it will be a real huge peak for however many days, 24 hours a day, then it'll flatten off. Okay? So, if you have effluent water available, one per one with fresh, the vast majority of the time, they could probably take them. But they can't take a bunch of effluent water without fresh. And you have so many different other places to load fresh, what would need to be is more opportunity to load effluent water, without a wait time. When I apply for the water connection, and as everybody has, as a trucking company, without that, you can't be in business here. Then you're like all the other guys from Fortune 200 Grand, where they just come here, go to work and lead again. It doesn't help the infrastructure of Dawson. So as for the effluent water, ideally, like I don't, how much effluent water do you guys have available on a daily basis?
Depends, depends on the day, anywhere from 2,500 to 5,000 cubes.
The other thing that I'm gonna try and look at doing, if I can have long-term water, raw untreated water, is I'm looking to buy effluent water, and have it stored at my property in tanks. And I'll truck it out there, because then, when they take the water, I'm not sitting in a lineup in town. The problem is with that, is I have to go load it, bring it out there, offload it, so that's gonna cost me some money. Right? But, it's the only other way to be able to provide one load and one, one and one. Otherwise, there's way more opportunities to load fresh. You have four other connections in town, and numerous ponds, but you only have one effluent riser, or one spot to load it. Right? And I don't know how many risers there is there, probably two?
I think two, but I could be wrong.
Yeah, but still, nonetheless, Mr. Burney, you know what it's like when six trucks come, and when everybody starts at seven, that's what they're gonna have.
Okay, I wrote down a lot of the questions, as you were going, that I think will be answered and we'll be able to discuss when we get to seven six. Are you gonna be sticking around for a little bit for that discussion then, Shane? Just because there was some, quite a bit of discussions around the billing and the fire use and all that, and I think that's a discussion that we'll have when we get to them, to the report, if you don't mind, instead of getting into a heated debate or discussion around it now. So on that, is there any more questions for clarity, then, from Mr. Carlson, from council, for anyone on his presentation? No? I just, thanks for coming in, it's, I just wanted to highlight the excitement that council always has, because the last two or three meetings, we've had people sit in that exact same chair, telling us that we have to start turning off industry and don't allow any more water, and now we have industry coming in. So I think it shows exactly the, yeah, what's happening within the community right now, and a lot of interest around water. And that's why we're having a meeting here in a couple of months, to try to iron some of this out, but.
As council, I clearly see, and it's none of my business, the exact numbers, but you guys can look at the volume of revenue coming in from water sales this year, last year, and years ago, when Mr. Shute, when there was virtually no water sales. You know, and you can see that, so it's, you guys kinda need that for revenue, but none of us.
Yeah. Okay, well, thank you very much, then, for all that information, and like I said, we'll be discussing here as soon as we get to that report, in about three or four more reports.
Okay, in the back room.
I thought so. But with that, let's, let's take four or five minutes, fill up your coffee cups, and then we'll get back to the rest of the meeting.
Do we have recycling here today?
Okay, so we're gonna call the meeting back to order. Missing a council in action, but he'll be back in a second, I assume. So with council's indulgence, gonna make a motion, we're gonna vary the agenda, let's go to seven six. And while it's hot in everybody's mind, I think we should just continue the discussion then on this topic. And seven six, we have the report 13051 from the Director of Infrastructure, Sustainable Development, this is regarding Mr. Carlson trucking the three-inch water connection, and the extension of the agreement for the raw water connection to Eris. So those were a couple of the comments that were made during the delegation, requests from his, and there was a couple other questions along the way around fire flows on a particular weekend, effluent hookup, and some paperwork for a passed bill. Jim, maybe possibly before we get into recommendations, there was quite a few questions in that delegation pertinent under this report anyway, so maybe we can try to clarify some of those?
Yes, through Your Worship. First, I have to state for the record that the city of Dawson Creek administration do not believe that Mr. Carlson's been treated unfairly in any way, and council has been, as accommodating as they can be, and possibly more accommodating than they ought to have been on past requests. Factually, some of the things stated are incorrect. The Jerry's well service connection is the rock water connection through several other owners, the Curtis York trucking connection is the Swamp Donkey connection through several successive owners. There are three connections currently, those are Rock Water, All Clean, and Curtis York Trucking. So, it is not, there are not five, there are three. Mr. Carlson's not the only one who has had a connection turned down, because the engineering reports say that it will compromise distribution system and fire flows. As you know, Mr. Inster had one turned down as well, and was just as annoyed as Mr. Carlson had.
We had another company, two months ago, make an application that got turned down.
One in the industrial park, and you turned them down as well. So that's one thing. Secondly, the proposal that somehow, rather than hooking up to a Secondly, the proposal that somehow, rather than hooking up to infrastructure that is already in front of your property, and which you have a right to connect, the question is just the conditions and the size. If we were going to run piping from the effluent plant to somebody's shop, so that, rather than a truck fill station where it's first come, first served, it was exclusively to someone, I'm not sure why you would do that, but if you were going to do that through an RFP process, you'd have to give everyone the opportunity to pipe directly to their shop, I think Carl Dolan would be interested in bidding, I know Curtis York would be interested in bidding. You certainly couldn't do that just to one. The questions around the water bill, I'm not going to discuss an individual water bill in an other meeting, I have a duty to protect that information, even if Mr. Carlson's willing to have it released, I'm not allowed to release it. But I will say that you issued a direction, you being council, not this seven people, but another seven people, many years ago, when we had a water hauler that we carried, that we allowed to have continuing longstanding amount going, that company went bankrupt, and the city was left holding the bag, and I received the direction from council, henceforth, no water hauler would ever get in that situation again, that we would demand payment, and that we would, that we would deny service to anyone who didn't keep current with their bill. The, it's not true that the bill was provided without paperwork, and the same situation, which is that we had an error in reading that was caught subsequently, applied to these other water haulers that I'm talking about, the other three, and they paid immediately.
So can I ask before you go further, Jim, because, I mean, the delegation's saying he didn't get paperwork, so, I know you don't want to get into the specific...
I'm not going to get into the specifics, your worship, the, some of the remarks made by the delegation are clearly in preparation of a lawsuit, so I'm not going to respond to them in this meeting. What I will say is, the situation for the Carlson shop in Eris is that we are not protected in any way, that's outside our boundaries, we have no jurisdiction, whatever, to collect unpaid amounts through taxes, we don't levy taxes on that lot. Your only option there is, is civil action. If you have a outstanding bill there, you would cut off the service, as we dug and were prepared to do. The policy around water billing that Mr. Carlson refers to applies to properties within the city, not properties without the, I don't understand that anything has changed from our council, I do not believe that you wish the citizens of Dawson Creek to carry debt for oil patch companies, I believe you still wish them to pay their bills when they receive them, and that if they have collection problems, I don't believe you wish to convert those to collection problems for your tax pay. I have no change in direction, until I get a change in direction, water haulers will pay their bills on time, or they won't have the service.
So Jim, so the difference being, because he's outside city limits, we've got very little recourse, but if it was, I'm not putting a name to it, one of the companies in town here, the three or whatever, in town, if one of them didn't pay their bills, we have a totally different action, because they're internal taxpayers for the city?
Actually, your direction is exactly the same, we tell them the same thing, they're going to pay, or they're going to be cut off. That's the direction of council, over and above your normal collection procedures for an unpaid water bill.
But if they don't, we've got different...
These are, these are huge amounts, we're talking about. As Mr. Carlson says, this is over a hundred thousand dollars for him, it was larger than that for Rock Water. These are amounts that expose the taxpayers to a great amount, and they're monthly, these amounts, this is what the oil patch uses. And, you know, I think it's a great direction you've given me, that we're not going to expose the taxpayers, that they're going to pay, or they're not going to have the service.
Okay, so, I know there's a few other questions as well around, I mean, I never heard at any time the question around fire protection for Puscoopy, I never heard anything from Puscoopy, that's, I mean, it's a different system out there?
Through your worship, the way the Puscoopy system works is we fill up, they fill up through a meter, their reservoir, and then they feed the community through their reservoir. The situation Mr. Carlson refers to, we have water haulers that exceeded the amount of liters per second they're allowed to take, which was the condition put on them when they got the connections. As a result, it overloaded the distribution system, and we were unable to keep the Park Hill reservoir full, which means if Pus had needed to fill their reservoir, we wouldn't have been able to do it, but Pus's reservoir was full at that time.
Yeah, so it was the Park Hill that was drawn down. Now, we have, I think we had discussion around that, there's alarms on that, and that's when we knew it was getting drawn down, we directed staff to go out, and we found out.
Yes, and it took some time to find where the problem was, to correct the problem and refill the reservoirs. That has no connection to the engineering studies that have been done relative to Mr. Carlson's shop area. The problem there is that our own water fill stations are basically adjacent, and there is no way, at any restriction, that we could accommodate that size of draw without shutting our water fill stations. And so, you've consistently said no to Mr. Carlson on that every time he is asked, for that reason.
So...
That's in the report that you're considering.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so with, with that, and I know there's probably further questions, but we'll get a motion on the floor, then something from council, so, let me, excuse me, there is a recommendation there for council to consider. Sorry? Let me look at that again. But open the floor then to council.
I'll make the motion on the floor.
Councillor Wilber?
Yep, I'll make the motion, that report number thirteen-zero-five-one, from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development, regarding Carlson Trucking Limited water requests be received, further that council defer any decision on extension of the agreement for the existing raw water connection in Eris, and the request for a three-inch water connection to one-twenty-one-hundred-and-sixteenth Avenue for S.A. and Carlson Trucking Limited, until after the public consultation meetings regarding water scheduled for April twenty-fourth, two thousand and thirteen.
Okay, seconded by councillor Schuman. I'm a little, I'm glad to hear what Jim said about the affluent though, I mean, we want to get more people using the affluent, the question in the letter from Mr. Carlson's asking for a three-inch potable water hookup, but we heard during the delegation that he wants that actually as a, as a, as an affluent, so just put that in clarification then for council, I believe that's his intent. Any questions then from council? Councillor McFadden?
So what we're saying is that we're not denying the three-inch water line, water line from the affluent plant to Mr. Carlson's shop on one-hundred-and-sixteenth, we're just putting it on the back burner till the twenty-fourth of April. Is that correct?
That is what's written in the recommendation that was just approved, yes. And in discussions, I think, the reason why that recommendation's there is the direction that council's had so far going forward, we've been hearing from a lot of people in the community, to actually change our water policy, and to not allow any further hookups, and that's when we said this is a broad discussion, because there's a lot of implications to the community, positive and negative, because we're trying to promote the industry, we're trying to promote the jobs in the area, we're also understanding that in order for the jobs to continue, that there's water use, and so it's quite a, a balance that we need to consider. And I know that this recommendation is because we just wanted to put it into a public forum, so we know where the direction, get more of community input. Thank you. Councillor Malkinson?
Was the hundred thousand dollar bill that the delegation referred to, given to him, it was for water sales, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And it was just, that's a pretty big, I don't know, any clarification I can be given on that, I don't know? Why did he get a hundred thousand dollars?
Not appropriate for this meeting, there is an item in the next meeting about it.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Councillor Parson?
Yeah, I, I will, I will support the motion, but I just want to make sure that I understand a bit of the history, this, my, this is my summary from reading the report, essentially, Mr. Carlson was given access to raw water on a temporary basis, and that once the reclaimed water facility was operational, then it was the expectation that he would access that site. But the, the two-year temporary thing was extended, because it was not, did not come on stream during that two years. The current situation in the city is that we have the reclaimed water facility operational.
Yes.
We have people use, accessing that, but they're also accessing potable water. So the original intention that suppliers of water to the oil gas industry would use the reclamation site in its entirety has not yet been realized. But, so that is a topic that council needs to resolve, right? Are they going to follow the intention when, as declared in two thousand and nine, when Mr. Carlson requested access to the raw water? Or are we going to not follow that direction, and we're still going to allow industry to use potable water? I think that's an important issue that needs to be discussed after the, after the consultation.
And I'm sure it's going to be a hot topic during, so...
Oh, yes, I, I suspect I might have an opinion different from some of my fellow councillors on that, but that can wait. Fine, so, really, I think the recommendation from staff is very fair, very good one to have, because there are some issues that need to be resolved, and part of the public consultation is to help with that resolution.
Jim?
Through your worship, just one point of clarification, not everyone using the reclamation facility has a shop, and is accessing potable water from the city, in fact, one of the biggest users of the reclaim at the moment is Crew Energy, and they are hauling to Alberta, they don't have a local premise at all.
Okay, any further questions, discussion, clarification needed from anyone on council? Okay, so as per the recommendation that was there, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? It's carried. That's where we sit. Sorry, Shane? Technically, I'm not allowed, maybe you should have... So that one there, as was mentioned, that didn't come up in the recommendation, because that one has to be discussed separately, but Brenda?
That is included in the recommendation.
Both requests are deferred until after.
Oh, did it say wrong? Sorry, I thought it was...
Yeah, that was my understatement.
Three-inch connection, okay. Because that one there has to be discussed internally as well, on the process for allowing a hookup to the, to the reclaimed site, right, so...
A permanent hookup for non-agricultural users.
Yeah.
Well, as Councillor Parson was just pointing out, the issues around whether you are going to require all industry use to go to the reclaim center is something that's being discussed in your public consultation, and it will be again. There's a specific deal with Mr. Carlson that he signed twice, that says, when the reclaimed is available, he won't be drawing raw water anymore. He's asking for a change to that. You're saying, let's hear from the public before we decide how we're going on that.
Jim, on that one, when is that contract deal, whatever you want to call it, technically expire?
I don't know the answer to that, your worship, but not before April.
But that's my concern, is that, I don't want to be all of a sudden in March this month, turning around and telling Mr. Carlson he can't take water prior to our meetings, which we're saying that that's what we're going to wait for, which is a month away. Okay? So that's where it stands right now, is after the public meeting, is what council voted Okay, so with that, it was just after ten o'clock, we have a delegation, I believe, set for ten-thirty, we should be able to get through some of these before then, so let's go back to seven-two. Seven-two is report thirteen-zero-three-six, regarding the corporate risk review and the And if council goes back to that. Councillor Parson?
I'd like to move that report number thirteen-zero-three-six, from the Deputy Chief Financial Officer, the corporate risk review report and policy be received. Further, that the risk management policy be approved as presented. I do have a question about that wording, but if it's appropriate, you mean recirculation for thirty days, or just, yeah, so it's soon, thank you. It will be circulated for thirty days, fine.
Okay, so you're okay with the recommendation then? Seconded by councillor Wilber. Any questions then on this one? Councillor Parson?
Yeah, just, just a comment, I've shared this with our Chief Administrative Officer. From my lens, we've had, we've had quite a few reports, but the two that stand out for me, from the point of view of for future use and impact, was the Perk report on user fees, and I think this strategy, even though I had some questions last meeting about it, this, I think this is a good lens to look at the risks when we take on certain major decisions, and I would hope that something like the upcoming water security issue that will be before the community very shortly, when we start zeroing in, we could possibly use this review to, or task staff to maybe engage this company, that we, we look at the decisions that we might make through this, this lens, I think it'd be very useful, and for all future major decisions.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, so all those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Move on to seven-three, and this is a report from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding the Economic Development Task Force. Councillor Schuman?
I'd move the recommendation, the report number thirteen-zero-four-five, from the Director of Corporate Administration be received, further that the Economic Development Task Force be reconstituted as the Economic Development Advisory Committee, and further that the proposed terms of reference be approved.
Okay, seconded by councillor Kenny. Any comments, questions? Councillor Kenny?
I'd like to let council know that Mayor Mike Bernier and myself met with the task force after, after our council meeting a couple of weeks ago, and explained to them the, the decision of council, the decision of the economic development strategy not being on council's priorities, that were identified in their strategic planning session, and, but there was, after having discussion with, with the committee, they, they wanted to carry on, they wanted to, they were, they were excited about the discussions that, that we had been having, and, and wanted to still be a part of, of the city, and, and a part of identifying opportunities for the city, in an advisory role.
Yes, good.
Maybe you'd like to add to that?
Yeah, well, I'd like to add by thanking you, first of all, because, you know, for the committee itself, and myself included in that committee, wheels were spinning a little bit, trying to figure out how to really get the, the cart rolling, and so thanks for all of your help there, and I too was very thankful and impressed with, with the committee, the members there, because I think one of the big things that we wanted to see is from an advisory kind of role, like, the whole point of putting this committee together was to have people, non-political people, actually in the community, who are in touch with goings-on in different facets of, of their backgrounds, who could probably, you know, giving us a heads up of what they see coming down the pipe, so, to help council in the future, so it wasn't, I think, I think the mandate, the way I understand this now, and from the discussion from the committee, the mandate is somewhat a little bit more diverse and changed from what the original intent was, and as, I believe you're going to be helping out still going forward for a little bit longer, and try to give some guidance there, and so I just want to thank the people, I know we have a couple here in the gallery as well, a couple, thank them for coming forward and continuing to help out, and... out and which at the end of the day is just trying to lead the community in the right direction, so, so thanks, so Counselor Kenny?
Well, I also think, you know, it fits with this council that, you know, we, we look for community consultation in, in every area. We're always talking about, you know, we should be getting more input from the community. And this is just another way of having more input from the community.
Yeah, thank you. And this could be also the starting point of going forward of other possible groups, you know, there's other times where we want to reach out to the community and I think around a template, uh, around how we want this to look, 'cause I think that's something council needs to consider when we talk about our community engagement is where else can we look at, uh, reaching out, getting more involvement in other different areas of the community? This is around economic development, but there's other areas that might require, and I see Counselor Parson smirking, uh, might require, uh, input from, from other people in the community as well, so... Were you wanting to add to that or just want to leave it at that for now, Counselor?
Well, uh, yeah, I shouldn't smirk when you're speaking, but, uh, we do have a relationship, but you know what I'm talking about. The, the, uh, I'm a little, I guess I need some in-service here from staff, uh, references made in this report, it would be a select committee. Um, can you expand on that for me? I apologize for not looking that up ahead of this meeting, Brenda, but...
Sure. Through your worship, the select committee, um, has to have at least one council member on the committee. Um, usually it's, um, for a topic that is gonna come back to council the next meeting, but, uh, the other committee you could have is a, a standing committee, but that has to have half of your members in council.
Yes.
So, um...
And this is under the community charter?
Yeah. Yeah, and within the terms of reference that you've listed here, um, you direct the committee to bring back, um, a recommendation whenever. So, it's not, that would be your direction opposed to the very next meeting? If that makes sense?
Yeah.
It's either the next meeting or as directed by council.
Yes.
That's what it's, that's what it's...
So, when they have their meetings and they're brainstorming, they come up with something, they can send something to council for consideration.
If I could add some...
One more and then we'll go there, yeah.
Yep. So, um, in the past, I had the impression, maybe I, an error here, but I certainly had the impression that, um, it had been sort of the position of council that we weren't going to have advisory committees. For instance, I'm thinking immediately of the Airport Advisory Committee, which was, I believe, not renewed or disbanded. Uh, what were the reasons for disbanding that, that particular committee? What, was there some bad experiences with advisory councils in general?
No, it, uh, the reason being is that one there, there was lack of participation from the community.
Okay.
Uh, there was, at one point, that task force advisory committee, uh, was quite active with quite a few members and it got down to the point where in the final year or two there was two people showing up, one of which was the airport manager. Um, so there was a discussion around, we actually reached out to the people who were originally involved, which was everything from local business people to the chamber to, um, the travel agents, uh, reached out to them and they all came back at that time and said that they weren't interested in continuing on or weren't coming to meetings, so that's why that committee was disbanded. It wasn't being productive.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I do not think there's a direction from council saying we weren't gonna be having committees like this, it was just kind of going around. Jim?
Through your worship, uh, as you recall, you brought in a consultant, Mr. Jerry Berry, to talk to you about governance structures at the airport. One of the things you looked at was a continuation of advisory committee. In the end, ironically enough, what you decided to do was that it wouldn't be appropriate to have an operational guidance committee, but on terms of developing the airport, economically developing the airport, you thought it would be just as good to have an airport representative on the, uh, Economic Development Committee. So, uh, that was, how that was left, you directed that you would examine having a specific airport position on this, the predecessor to this recommendation. As an Economic Development Task Force.
So, have there been any other advisory committees apart from the airport in the past, ten years or so?
You know what, that's a good question, I have to go back on my list to see what else there was, Jim?
Yes, uh, during the term of office of Mayor Dolan, Mayor Dolan had several advisory committees, um, but I don't believe we've had any, uh, since then, except those structured for a specific task.
Yeah.
And they were discontinued when Mayor Dolan ceased to be mayor?
Yes.
Was it, or was there, was there reasons for that?
I would need to be a mind reader to know the answer to that question, but, uh, the new council headed by Mayor Crook, um, wasn't as attracted to the idea as the council headed by Mayor Dolan.
So, we, we could have a budget advisory committee, for instance, or whatever, whatever fertile minds conjured up. Just a rhetorical question.
And yours. Uh, Counselor McFadden?
If I understood what Ms. Ginter was saying, that council could actually task this committee with a project or could say, we want you to investigate the economic development of the widget or something, uh, they could actually do...
Through your worship, it is the committee of council and you can direct the committee to research any item.
Thank you, I, I just, I don't know what the purpose of it is. I thought this was all killed back in January. I wasn't here for that meeting, but there was some money that was not given and I thought it was dead in the water then and now here it is again.
So, what I, what I can clarify there is what's, what happened in January is the direction from council was to, uh, well, a letter came forward from, uh, the committee asking for fifty thousand dollars in this year's budget to be committed for economic development, uh, terms of reference through the, through a consultant. And so, council did not vote against the committee, council voted against putting funds into the committee at this time, is what the motion was.
As a consultant.
Yes, for a consultant.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, any further questions then? So, oh, sorry, Counselor Wilber?
Um, originally, uh, when the task force was started, my understanding was the mandate was to form, they were gonna come up with a terms of reference. We never saw a terms of reference, to the best of my memory. Um, we did, did not see that putting fifty thousand dollars in this budget was feasible, but I just see on here, there's, um, you know, supportive staff, so I'm wondering how much supportive staff, what's that looking like? And also that, uh, under responsibilities, the advisory committee will review the city's economic development plan. What is our plan if the task force was originally to come up with a terms of reference?
I think they're, they're referring to the plan that we did a couple of years ago, 'cause we actually already did an economic development plan in terms of reference back in two thousand and seven, I think, or six? So, I think the recommendation is that that plan go to the committee for them to review to decide, are there action items out of there they can look at? Is it something that needs to go back on the shelf and something new? I mean, those are hard to say.
So, if we already had a plan, then I don't understand the difficulty in renewing our terms of reference that we haven't seen yet, like, we've never, ever seen a terms of reference out of that task force, but now we want to turn it into an advisory committee, so I'm, I'm just having a hard time wrapping my head around the need for this advisory committee if they couldn't, weren't able to finish the task they were mandated with and, and they came back saying they would need a consultant to do that. So, what, I don't understand their role now, just as, they're just gonna advise on the plan we already have?
Or make recommendations that they have to do a new plan or make recommendations that they've heard things in the community that this is what we should consider? It's basically no different than when we used to have the advisory committee for the airports, uh, no different, you know?
I think my, my point is they've been together for a year now and had...
Four meetings.
Or four meetings, still, for a year and have had, not been able to make any recommendations around a terms of reference for our economic development plan.
Well, actually, I would argue that the fact that they did make a recommendation and council voted against it.
To hire a consultant.
So, Brenda?
Through your worship, the original direction to the committee was to prepare the terms of reference for an economic development strategy.
Okay.
So, um, to do that, they felt the need of consultant.
Yeah.
And that's, through a few meetings, they worked out to that point and that, of course, was a budget decision from council.
Yeah, so when we went back to the committee and said, council said no to the money, uh, the committee turned around and said, you know, 'cause the option was, do we disband and not do anything? And the committee members, uh, majority of them said, well, we feel we still have some time, we want to commit and we're willing to volunteer, uh, to be able to go forward. And one of the ideas was, maybe they'll come next year with, uh, another budget request or maybe they'll just come forward with a bunch of ideas, um, from them, 'cause I mean, there's a cross-section of people on that committee from the community, uh, with different expertise around economic development, so that's where it's going.
Thank you for the clarity, thank you.
You have one more?
Yeah.
Before I call the question?
Yeah, thank you. Um, you know, my concern with any advisory committee, not, I'm not talking about this particular one, but any, is that they then just go on and on. I, I'm all for consultation, but I think it needs to be term-specific so that these committees just don't go, go on and on and on. So, I'm going to vote against this because I don't believe in having committees that have a, an end in life.
Sure enough, I believe if you look at the report, which I think Brenda will correct me, there actually is a timeline on this. Brenda?
Yes, um, within the terms of reference, it's up to council to, um, reconstitute the committee on...
On an annual basis.
January.
Yeah. So, we did put no, we did put a, an end date on it, so every year it has to be re- reviewed and considered whether we continue on, so... Okay, so on that, we'll, uh, call a question. So, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? And it is car, sorry, Counselor Malkinson?
No, no, I was, I was, I was, uh...
You voted twice or...
I was in favor, no.
Okay, that's what I thought, so it is carried then.
I was just, yeah, I voted twice, yeah.
Just making sure you were voting in favor, so it's carried then, okay.
It's a little known section of the charter.
Charter doesn't allow you to vote twice, you know? Nor put up two hands for the same motion. But it is carried, it's not quite, uh, ten thirty, we're gonna continue on, um, seven four, uh, we have a report here regarding the lights at Turgeon Drive. As you know, we had a letter come forward with some concerns, so there's a recommendation here for two thousand and fourteen. Counselor Schuman?
I move the report number thirteen dash zero four seven from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding streetlights on Turgeon Drive be received, further that council direct staff to propose sixty-seven thousand five hundred for installation of street lighting along Turgeon Drive in the two thousand and fourteen financial plan.
Okay, seconded by Counselor Kenny? Any questions?
Is this, uh, regular lighting or, or solar lighting?
No, their recommendation would be go regular lighting and remove the two solar lights that are there, but Jim?
Through your worship, um, the history of this is, there was, um, a petition received from that neighborhood asking for streetlights. Uh, the cost at that time was extremely high, estimated two hundred and fifty thousand dollars because of the, um, state of where electricity was available.
Yes.
Um, council didn't have the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but, uh, said, let's look at alternatives, we can get a grant, put up a couple of solar lights, maybe that'll work. Well, as Mr. Ma points out, it didn't. Uh, so, uh, since that time, that entire area, the old Rotary Harbor area has been redeveloped and now it would be significantly less expensive to run the actual street lighting on Turgeon Drive. So, our recommendation is that you consider that in the two thousand and fourteen budget and they would be standard streetlights with LED lights in them.
Okay. Any further que, Counselor Malkinson?
Just wondering, uh, if the residents are aware of this, uh, recommendation, I don't know, what do they think of it?
They were complaining about it in the first place.
That's, that's right, that's right.
The, uh, the residents in that area asked for this, as Jim said, years ago, and we put in the solar lights, then they, they came back and said solar lights weren't working to their satisfaction, so, uh...
Just regular lights.
I'm sure they would rather you did it in two thousand and thirteen, but our recommendation is you're too far along your budget process to accommodate that.
Yeah. Counselor McFadden?
We have on Eighth Street North some solar-powered, is it stop signs or flashing lights that seem to be working?
We have them in a few locations.
Yeah, they seem to work well. I wonder what happened up, uh, there that they didn't work? It's just interesting, 'cause they seem to work well other, in other parts of town.
Yeah, these, well, these are different, different kind of light, the ones you're referring to are the, uh, the red warning lights, it's, uh, placed at a couple areas, uh, stoplights. Those ones are a different design, different size, and they've, uh, worked quite well.
They do, yeah.
Um, I, I think that these ones here are, are gonna be looked at again to see if they can be tweaked to work and maybe placed somewhere else, but Jim?
Uh, through your worship, to begin with, two is just not sufficient. It's six to eight that are required there.
Yeah.
Uh, we could go to trying eight solar lights and see how that works, but, uh, it's, uh, even with the LEDs, you're stretching, uh, the capacity of streetlights because it's an extra-wide boulevard. It's, uh, it's really more than, uh, it's almost three times the size of a normal street and that's the problem, it's just that how far the light casts.
The boulevard's as big as the streets put together almost.
Yes. Okay, so Counselor Parson?
Just a comment that, uh, you know, the messaging of this is that it's going to be put forward into the two thousand and fourteen financial plan for consideration. Just quoting Jim there, he used the word consider, so we're not saying this is going in, it's going to be put, put in with all the other requests and they not be assessed by council in the two thousand and fourteen.
Yeah, yeah, the motion is to put it in the capital plan, but like always, when it comes to two thousand and fourteen, it...
I'm just saying that for, who knows? Who knows?
That's fair.
Yes, and Mr. Ma is aware of this process. He, uh, he will, uh, understand what we're saying.
Yes. Okay, so with that, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? It's carried. Seven five is report thirteen zero four nine. This is for the Rotary Bridge Proposal, it might need, require some solar lighting around it if we approve this, so Counselor Malkinson?
Move that, uh, this report from our Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding the Rotary Club, Club Bridge Proposal be received and further that council direct staff to work with the Dawson Creek Rotary Club to complete the installation of the proposed bridge upon receipt of the structural engineer drawings and schedules and further that staff be directed to work with the Dawson Creek Rotary Club to address design concerns around visibility and safety.
Okay, seconded by Counselor Schuman. And also just want to thank staff, 'cause I know they reached out to every community group they could think of to make sure that, you know, all the aspects of this were thought of around safety, around, uh, location, access, lighting, um, doesn't sound like there was any groups that came, you know, some people said make sure that these things are dealt with, but nobody came out saying, don't do it and this is wise, so... Counselor Schuman?
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, thank staff for, um, you know, meeting with Staff Sergeant or with the RCMP and discussing the safety issues around such a, a bridge and, uh, I'm happy with the report and looking forward to what they can figure out.
Okay, any further, further questions? Counselor Parson?
Yeah, I know, I, I support what Counselor Schuman said in the point of view of the work that's been done, but I will be voting against this, uh, because my gut tells me that I, I just can't see this being, uh, something that will be complimentary to the, all the other work that's been done there. I know there's a problem, we've got with, uh, just getting a bridge, but I just, my, this is purely one of those gut things that I, I just, I guess maybe they presented a different photograph of the one they did, but seen these, I've seen other things where some of these, uh, things have been cut up and I haven't seen one that, uh, particularly attractive yet, so I, I don't know if we had a report, no, I'm not saying, I'm just voting against this.
Okay. And I appreciate exactly where you're coming from, 'cause that's, I think that's why we asked for staff to investigate into this last meeting, because I think our gut from almost everybody around the room, I would argue, was, probably had some concerns around that and safety and, uh, just the whole aesthetics of it, uh, which is why staff reached out with everybody to make sure those concerns were looked at and thought of prior to the recommendations, so, um, as much as I appreciate the, uh, the Rotary Club and the few individuals coming forward, I share some of those same concerns, just, but I, I think those are maybe just me thinking aesthetically, um, but we do, we do need to have a bridge there and my, my think, my thinking is, is this wouldn't be temporary, it would be like most things, it would be, end up there and probably be there for a long time, which is, you know, achieve the purpose of the, uh, having a bridge over there, but is this something that visually the council wants to? So, Counselor Wilber?
I mentioned this last time and I just, I, I'm almost passionate in the fact that I see this as a backdrop for another one of our community murals. I, I see this as having potential and it's all how you look at it and I, I see it as a great art project and I see that it can become a part of our history and, uh, so I'm definitely voting for it and I say thank you to the Rotary for coming up with a solution and I think we can incorporate a lot of groups in our community putting this forward. So, I will be voting in favor of it.
Yeah, and there's a lot of potential there, I know exactly where you're coming from. Councilor Kenny?
Well, just knowing that it's the Rotary Clubs that are doing it, and I was a Rotarian for a few years, that I can't see them putting anything up that's going to be an eyesore. They take a lot of pride in the work that they do in the community, they work hard in our community and internationally, and so I, I think, you know, with, you know, engineers' drawings and with, with our staff looking over it, I can't see it going to be a problem. I'd be very surprised.
Yeah. Well, and that's where, to Councilor Wilber's point, you know, some partnerships with the arts community or whatever might be able to enhance this, right? Any other comments, then? Okay, so all those in favor? Opposed? One hand going up, not two, but it does carry. 7-7, this is report 13-050, this is regarding retirement farewell gift policy.
Through your worship?
Yes.
10:30?
Yes.
Oh, so.
Thank you.
So we could...
Yeah. So, Councilor Schuman?
Move report number 13-050 from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding retirement farewell gift policy be received, further that the employee retirement policy be renamed to the retirement farewell gift policy, and further that the revised version attached to this report be approved pending the required 30-day review period.
Perfect. Seconded by Councilor Wilber. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried. Thanks, Brenda, I just thought that would be a fast one, so I thought I'd sneak it in there. But it is 10:30, and we're going to go back, we do have a delegation under 6-2, Daniel's here from Waste Management. And, good morning, sir, we're going to let you come up, do you need a few minutes? I think we have a PowerPoint, right?
We do, through your worship, if you would like to finish your reports before doing the presentation, I can certainly wait.
That's, no, that's fine, because I'm, I don't know how long some of these other ones will go, so I'd rather, you know, not have you held up and...
But maybe you could take a couple minutes here?
We will, thank you. Yeah, we'll take three, four, and five minutes here, whatever it takes for coffee, and for you to jump up and grab that screen.
Terry?
Well, meeting back to order, and, you know, for coming in today on behalf of Waste Management and bringing props with you, that's always exciting. First time, but again, thanks for coming in. I know we had a couple of discussions over the last year, I know yourself, Councilor Schuman and myself met at the FCM, and we talked about the possibilities, and I know you worked with staff as well, as well, about some different opportunities possibly for the city, but without that, I won't steal any of your thunder, I'll turn it over to you, maybe do your little presentation and...
Thank you, everybody, appreciate that. Good morning, office of the council members. And Mayor, I think what we want to do today is, you know, just reintroduce some of the concepts that we've been talking about for a lot. Waste Management has been a member of providing services in this community for many years, and I think one of the things that I heard, listening to some of the members of council and some of the desires of the community to be more sustainable, was to, not only on this particular file, but, you know, I think as a whole, we're seeing this city being very proactive in a lot of their sustainable ideas and creative thinking. So I think as part of my role, my job, was to look at how we're providing services to you today, and seeing if there's an opportunity to think differently, being a little bit more proactive, bringing some ideas to your community that, that might be appealing, that fits into your sustainable community ideas. So, if this is someone's recorder, I'm allowed to press it. This is the...
That is actually somebody's recorder? All right.
Because that's a recorder.
No. Just jab any of their sort of...
Light, can we kill a light service?
Is the thing...
Is the key in it?
It's under it.
Yep.
There you go.
Needs to have something to talk to.
Figure ten seconds, you're only going to get these four.
Promise I won't jab any, I'll just let you run this.
All right, again, you know, when we're bringing, the status quo of waste in this community, we've been, it's been over 20 years of literally providing the curb side collection as we've had it, and some of the more proactive things was to do a reduction in bag limit. I think that helps a community reduce the amount of waste it does produce, and I think when you have a bag limit, it also encourages residents to find an alternate location for the products that they can recycle. Obviously, this comes into the reduce, 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 reuse, and recycle component as you're encouraging the residents to do the right thing, to find alternatives to the products that they use, as well as making sure that the products that can be recycled do get to a recycling depot as you've had one. When we're looking at some concepts, one of the things I think we're trying to do is you've already done a very aggressive limit on the two-bag limit, I think that was very, again, that's a decision that has been made by council and was very proactive. You see many communities not taking that kind of a stance. They're still in multiple bag limits and even unlimited bag limits, so to have that commitment that you have made in the past already is, again, something that's supportive, and likely you wouldn't need to go any further than that, you can maintain the two-bag limit. When we looked at what, what is the next steps, there's a lot of research and data that, that does show once you start offering a curb-side recycling program, more and more residents do take advantage of that program, and, and I think that's was the evolution we're trying to look at, is to see, you know, what is it that this community could do a little differently, that can introduce more recycling and have residents given the opportunity to do more diversion, which is why we, we were looking at maybe a curb-side recycling program. When we were talking about curb-side recycling, again, it's not just a matter of adding services and 100% cost increases, it's a matter of can we do it effectively and efficiently? And that was where we wanted to look at, is can we introduce a new service, could we do something differently for this community and keep the costs in check? And I think with the newer technologies that have come up, the props in front of you, I think this is why I brought them today, is the toders of old were a lot heavier and cumbersome to handle. The weight of these particular totes, and this particular company called Toder offers a light product, there are a number of other suppliers that need the same thing, so, you know, it is not just this particular company, it is an industry technology that, that does offer a lighter tote. This lighter tote gets convenience to the curb, offers, I think, a number of different residents to be able to maneuver these particular totes. The maneuverability of the tote, if you could take your two-bag limit of garbage that you've already established, take those two bags a week and put them into the toter that can manage and handle four bags' worth of capacity, then you can actually alternate weeks between one or two week garbage and one or two week recycling. And that concept is where we came up in trying to offer a new service to your community, maintaining the two-bag limit, and also maintaining the cost of service. So you're bringing a new service and trying to keep it as a cost-effective for your residents. I think that was the concept that we were introducing, that's what we were looking at, trying to blend into the concepts of sustainable Dawson Creek initiatives, again, not only on this file, but on a number of files that we were looking at, and we felt this might be a good solution to introduce to you. This is just reinforcing some of the comments I just made, which is, you know, again, introducing services, having every other week, recycling every other week garbage, so on one week the community would recycle, and then next week you'd be doing your garbage collection. By, by having an efficient use of collection, we can maintain cost of collection, and the other thing that we, our focus as we entered was using some of the local resources that are here in Dawson Creek. Jeremy from DC Recycling, I made discussions with him, and, you know, it is our full intent to use his services, and then there is a facility here in town that can avail those recyclables, and that was our intent is to work with him and use those facilities, so. Just to reiterate, it was trying to be as efficient, efficient use of, of resources that are already available. And I think when you, when you take that approach, it delivers a better solution, cost-effectively, and it grows your community, and so those are kind of the concepts that we were introducing. When you look at the recycling in the toter and the curb-side collection, again, you're looking at diversion rates, the increase of the diversion rates are going to become paramount in the years to come for this community and the regional district as a whole. I, I think there's going to be, well, we know that there's going to be some provincial emphasis on recycling, and that'll for sure puts a pressure on, on your, on your landfill cost, even the, the volumes of the landfills will be reduced, and, you know, they will likely be increasing your landfill rates, so, you know, there's further incentive for communities to recycle more because their landfill rates will be going up. And I think it's, I don't have the official number in front of me, but it's, it's my understanding, in this community, in the next couple of years, years, 2013, 2014, it'll be like a 22% increase in landfill rates. So, you know, when you look at getting more residents recycling more and diverting more, becomes, again, sustainable programs, comes as a, as a concept for a greater community, but for cost effectiveness, it'll also help this community as well. Improved community aesthetics, well, you know, if you have bags of garbage that are available, that's always open to the elephants, and they'll open to maybe some animals that may like the contents of your garbage, which...
Just say ravens, we all know that.
We all know.
Having, having these totes, I think, will help, you know, at least secure the contents of your products, and at least the animals won't get to it, and it'll also accommodate your bag limit you've already had set, so I think that's one of the things that we're looking at, is, you know, a nice uniform look, this particular color is, well, just pretty black, can come in a range of colors of this city's choice, so. Usually the concepts would be black for garbage, and then you would do a green for a recycling bin, just to kind of have a visual aid for residents to make sure they put the proper products in the proper bin. This, this display obviously has two garbage bins, and, you know, I wanted to show that these, these two models, one is a 64-gallon and another one is a 96-gallon cart. And I think this is one that hopefully will encourage all of you to, you know, take a look and get a sense of the size of these. There are smaller ones available as well, there's a number of different sizes, but these are more of the industry specifics you'll see for standardization on 64-gallons or 96-gallon carts.
Which one holds the four-bag limit, both of them, or?
Well, you know, I think you'll find the 96-gallon will, will absolutely get you there, and I think you would have no resistance from your, from your rate pairs, you know, that'll hold for four bags. And I think this is where, if you want to encourage your residents to recycle more, not unlike the bag limit, you know, a smaller tote will encourage people to, to get more pot out of their waste into the recycling bin. The 96-gallon might be a good way to just start off as an option for residents, if they feel that they cannot reduce their waste limit, then you go with the 96-gallons. I think you'll have a number of residents going, this 64-gallon will be ample for, for my bag limit.
So there, will, it will be a separate, will there just be each resident has one container and...
Each resident will have one container.
One big...
In the event that the 96-gallon cart will just physically not be enough for them, they could likely get a second cart, that's a choice of council administration that they wish to have.
So, so you would put recycling in...
No, I think it's two different ones here, one's for recycling, one's for...
One for recycling, one, yeah, one for recycling and one for garbage.
So we could have a really big one for recycling and a really...
Yeah, and I, I think that's, that would be part of, I think, the consultation we wanted, is to really get a feel from the residents of what they want, you know, what is it that you're looking for? Is it a uniform 64-gallon or, because we do get feedback from a lot of folks that they say, "We just don't generate that much garbage, and the 64s are ample."
Well, if they're generating two bags a week, odds are those might be people that don't do a lot of recycling, so the whole process would be now through recycling. Like my family of five, I go through one black garbage bag every two weeks in my house, but I could probably fill up the large one there with recycling every week.
Right. So, I guess it's... The standardizing, I was...
You go ahead, sorry.
I'd say the standardization in the community, you probably want to do a 96-gallon recycling, so have kind of the large cart, given the maximum ability of recycling.
And bulk your stuff.
Yeah. So you'd want to standardize the recycling cart, and then the waste cart becomes the more contentious issue because it's, I need the bigger cart for my volume, or I'm fine with the smaller cart, so, you know, you, you can give a couple of options to your residents for waste collection. Councilor?
What's, talk to me about apartment ops. How is recycling going to be handled in multiple dwellings?
Well, that will be an evolution that will happen here quite shortly, with the introduction of MNC and some program initiatives that are coming, but if this community does choose to move ahead with the single-stream recycling program, what we've done in other communities like City Redwood, is we've offered a commercial, a commercial front-load container for waste as it's typically at these facilities, and a commercial front-load recycling bin that can manage the single-stream product stream. So you'd actually have a front-load bin that can handle the paper, cardboard, the tins and plastics, all in one front-load container, and for multifamily residents that, or buildings that physically cannot accommodate bins, these toders would be available for them.
Right now apartment buildings in town here have either through you or another contractor have the large square, right, containers right there.
So that would sort of be up to them to decide, right?
Well, they have one for garbage and one for recycling, won't they?
Yeah, but...
Oh?
But that would be up to the owner of the property?
Yeah, well, for now, they have the choice, but it's increasingly, you're seeing communities moving to, as Daniel says, single-stream, where actually the separation has to occur. The, we're nowhere near that yet, but many large places are already there, just to control info costs.
Are we, are we finished the presentation?
No, actually, I was wondering if maybe we might just let Dan finish the presentation.
There's a couple, there's about five more minutes, if that's all right. Do you want questions after, or?
Probably, we better let you finish, because it might bring up a few more questions.
Sure.
Or answer a few that might have, no.
It's also serves to increase recycling participation and education, and the reason we bring this up is Waste Management has, you know, extensive marketing ability, provides services across North America to many communities, and we do have an extensive marketing approach that helps communities tailor a program for their community. And, you know, that's for uniform recycling we're going to offer to residents, to making sure that all the city facilities are doing the same thing, so just showing leadership, I think, in the city facilities on what is it that you want your residents to do, so. And I think that's, that's where we can assist and make sure that uniform service is rolled out. School recycling programs, again, we've offered that, specifically, I'll go back to the city of Redwood example, was being uniform in the service that we did for the multifamily, offering the same kind of service to the schools, making sure that everybody in the community, whether you're a resident, going to school, or living in an apartment, had the same program, opportunity to recycle at your facility, your resident, your community, your place of doing business, so, you know, I, I think that, that's important. There are other aspects to recycling that, that we feel generates some enthusiasm, the recycling, solar-powered recycling units, those kind of units offer, again, a vessel or a way to capture the product. and compact these products. So you don't have mess, you don't have a shortage of either waste and recyclables in a, in a nice streetscape atmosphere. The reason these are, are nice because action is run off solar power. So you don't have to plug them in, you don't have to have, you know, separate power sources. So again, just more, more increased availability and more increased opportunity for residents to recycle, whether they're walking down the street, or in their parks, or in wherever you are. So the idea is to just make it more uniform, consistent, interoperable. And just, this is your sustainability partnership and, you know, all kind of, you're the key piece, you're in the middle. And there's a lot of moving parts that are around you, but, you know, I think being consistent, offering your residents an opportunity to do more at the curb. And that'll actually help you control costs in the future that will likely build up, like landfill costs, like diversion ideas. Next steps, obviously, you've already established that educating the citizens, developing goals and plans. For us, that's Waste Management, what we still need to work on with the administration, some of the details of that. They want Waste Management support, specifically in the marketing and support on the education. Jim and I are, you know, we've had some initial discussions and there'll be more to come on that, on, you know, what are the next steps. And that's the end of the slideshow. I have another illustration on a separate deck, but I don't know how I can get to it.
Was that the?
It would be just the, the marketing material.
I think we have that in email form.
It, it really, it's fine if it can't come up, you know, I think.
I know we have a video on there.
Sure, and I'll, I'll actually cue the, the audience here if they'd like to see the video. But I think the other, the other items that, that I'd sent out was about the marketing and just to show, I think sometimes when Waste Management comes in, you, you, the misnomer that we hear is that it can be more of a cookie cutter approach on marketing and, and, you know, how it looks. Specifically, I've done.
That's not it. Yeah.
That is the video and this would be the marketing document.
We could have a, I think we have a, don't we have a, it's in the document?
Anyway, I don't think that's a, that's, that's in the next step.
The marketing document.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
The marketing document is on, on their agenda.
We did see it on our agenda.
Sure, and really, I think it just, what I wanted to just say about that, not necessarily gave the illustration of it, is that it can be very tailored approach, you know, it, it's definitely to the needs of the community. So there is obviously a large list of marketing and, you know, slides and agendas and things that we can pick from. And once we kind of get, mesh the, some of the concepts of the community, we can tailor a nice program, whether it's a brochure, whether it's public consultation, you know, whatever it is, it can be tailored to your needs. So that's all the, the public marketing piece was to illustrate, was, was that.
Yeah, well, just kids know, I mean, there's the options there, but that's like the next steps that we decide what we're going to roll out and we definitely will.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, it's more than just the fact that, you know, we, we do work hand in hand with communities on that. We're willing to, to do that here for some.
So why don't we watch the video and then we'll see what questions you have.
Sounds good. This, this video is actually a video of, just to, I think, illustrate some of the ingenuity that some of these folks will come up with. It's tailored for single stream recycling. And it'll be very innovative.
Well, I can honestly say, I think in my three terms here, it's the first time we've watched a music video.
This is just simply to illustrate, you know, these are just the tool to educate young folks, just to give them, energize the folk doing something different. And that's why I brought the video up. I might be, you know, that's the kind of concept that we introduce to schools.
I just want to say, how do I get my hands on the video for when I'm touring the schools?
It's right here on YouTube, I'm touring.
Play it again.
Perfect.
Maybe get that to the center.
Several questions, the material in the, these particular ones is, looks like plastic to me, is that right? In these totes, it's made of plastic?
Yes, it's resin, yeah, plastic resin, yeah.
Yeah, are there any such devices made with recyclable materials?
There is, yeah.
And what's the cost difference?
It's becoming less of a difference between the traditional for without the recyclable materials. To now that there is, you know, products with, with them, so it's not much of a difference. Worthy of a look, I would say. The toter concept in, to the residential service is becoming a lot more common nowadays. Where I would say five years ago it was less common, so more and more communities is, is poor. As an industry, it's becoming more of a common theme to do curbside toter collection.
Yeah, I thought it would be good to have the containers made of recyclable materials if we're trying to message something.
You bet.
There's always people who see contradictions in what people say and what they do. It might be good to look at that. The, the second question, so now I understand what single source means, okay?
Sorry, Councilor Parswell, can I try to just maybe lean a little forward because otherwise the camera doesn't pick you up?
Thank you, thank you.
With your voice.
Yeah, you betcha. So, so the sorting would take place in the recycling plant here in Dawson Creek?
So the recycling plant here in Dawson Creek, the concept that we were introducing and talked about last fall was for DC Recycling to accept the material and bail all the products into a single stream bay.
Oh, into single stream bay, okay, okay. Now just, you may not know the answer to this, I'm just, I'm one of these people who reads a lot around environmental things. And I recall, and this is just a recollection, I will try to find it out, that, that notwithstanding issues of landfill, which might trump all other considerations, you know, so don't get this wrong at all. But I, I've understood that there's, in looking at the cost, the equation from the point of view of environmental impact, that there comes a point of, of a tipping point, that if you live, if you have to ship from a distance greater than, and I'm making this figure up because I don't recall it, let's say six hundred miles, that then the, the environmental benefits are lost because of fuel and other, other things. Where does the shit stuff get shipped from here in Dawson, is it in Chicalbury area or?
Well, you know, Jeremy's practice in how he processes and ships his product is his own part of the company's interest. So we don't run his facility and I think that was the whole point, is that we would work with him to make sure that your products get delivered to him. Um, we're certainly not at control of how he pros, you know, it's, that's his company's.
Right, right, but this, it was saying the same thing, literature's saying for communities living some distance from where the stuff, it's not an environmentally sound practice, that notwithstanding landfill issues. But just ask your question around glass, is glass in this, mixed in with this, uh, uh, single source recycling?
Uh, glass would not be.
Would not be. Anything else that's included?
Uh, garbage, styrofoam.
Yeah, naturally styrofoam, yeah.
But, but on that, I should mention, because I met with Jeremy on Friday, I spoke with him, because they do accept glass in the local recyclers.
Yeah, it is.
And he's also in the process of buying, and looking at buying, sorry, a styrofoam compactor so he can, that's the one thing that he can't take right now and he's looking at, trying to start taking that as well, so.
There was a prohibition around glass for a while when glass was not cost effective from Dawson to wherever it was being sent.
And the idea of, you'll see more, you know, not only the studies you're looking at, there's a lot of studies that when you start having styrofoam and glass in these products, you start to diminish the value of what you're trying to do because the products inside is literally a commodity.
Yeah.
Work, money for this community. So if you can have any of your money, then it, you know, becomes, you know, not about, not to say the glass and or styrofoam can't be recycled. It's one of those things, if you put styrofoam in its own, bring it to a depot, light trip is, or glass in its own form, you could crush that, manage that, it's trying to pick out the glass from the paper is the problem, not the glass itself.
Yeah, so back to the educational component if we do, ended up doing something like this.
Right, right, it's not that those products aren't recyclable, they're just, they're better served out of this container and directly to the body, to that facility that can manage it effectively in its source separated.
Okay, I think we had a few more other questions around as well, so Councilor McFadden.
Good morning, I just want to say that I think your local team just does a fantastic job in the job they do around the town. They're just been here for a long time and they do a great job. But that, but so does Jeremy at the center. And I would be difficult, I'd have a difficult time supporting any action that would in any way hamper them in what they're doing. I think they've done a great job over the years, they need to continue doing that. And my understanding is there would be no increase in the rates to the taxpayers for this service, the change in service, is that correct?
The, the collection service is, is, there's no impact on the collection service.
Okay, now, there's a cost.
So we should, yes.
That assumes that the project goes forward with Waste Management under our existing terms. If we go to market, it's possible that the market price that we get back will be higher than it is now.
Who knows what would happen then, yeah. And there's a cost for these totes, what, what do they cost? They're not, they're not cheap or?
No, they're larger ones will, you know, again, depending if you want recycled content and colors and branding and, you know, they all come with, in, in simple black form, you can get these for less than a hundred for this one and probably more like seventy-five for this guy.
We have seen in competing communities, uh, an infrastructure charge for your totes, anywhere from a dollar fifty to three dollars a billing cycle.
I'm sorry, a what?
Dollar fifty to three dollars a billing cycle, that's absolutely unknown now because we don't know how many we're doing. We don't know who the contractor's going to be, but.
This is a proposal is what you have to answer.
Okay, thank you.
And maybe you could speak to the, your concerns about the recycling people that are.
Yeah, well, through the school processes, we've, you know, been, been talking about this for, well, for quite some time. Was for us to use Jeremy's facility. I mean, that was no desire for us to, to build another facility in town to bail product. But that wasn't our intent, it never was. I'm on record saying that because I don't want to talk to Jeremy, talk to them, you know, what we want to do. The concept is, literally, when we're looking at concepts about being efficient and sustainable in the community, it's using the resources that are here.
Yeah, that was my concern because that's probably the busiest place in town on a Saturday morning. They're lined up, people are lined up to get in.
But there's where the concern comes from.
And, yeah, and I just would be, I would have a tough time supporting any activity that would in any way hamper that what they're doing.
Yeah, if I can, with my quick discussions with him on Friday around this concept, his, his concern was not taken away. It was going to be the added pressures to his business because now the amount of recycling that could be coming in,
Yeah.
it's no longer going to be considered a Saturday morning voluntary thing. It'll be a, every day, a truck will be dropping off, well, every second week. If this concept would be dropping off stuff to his place to deal with. And so he was actually thinking, I might have to hire more people and I might have to expand to accommodate this.
Bonus?
So, there are, there's possible benefits out of this for everybody.
No, I was just, that's my concern.
Yeah.
That's our contribution to economic development.
There you go.
It's just the people for you to talk to.
Excellent. So on, I know we're, in the next meeting, we're going to be discussing things a little separate out of this, but is there any more questions around, in the open here around the presentation? No? Well, thank you very much for coming in with this. As I say, and I, I know you appreciate the, the issue of what decisions we make. I mean, this is one of our top priorities this year is to look at doing this. And then the issue now will be around the public consultation. And I'm glad to see that you identify that and are willing to work with us if we go this route because it is a, a great change, even though it happens in so many communities and I think it's the next step that we have to get to. But to get there, obviously, there's going to be some educational components that are going to have to be built in with the communities. So thanks for addressing that and would be willing to work with us on that.
Mayor?
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks a lot. And with that, let's go back to the, the agenda and we'll continue on and finish the rest of the open. We were at seven eight.
Seven seven.
Seven eight.
We passed seven seven. That was the one that we kind of just quickly threw in there before ten thirty.
Really wrote it.
So seven eight is report thirteen zero five two. Councilor Parswell.
I'd like to move that report number thirteen dash zero five two from the Deputy Director of Infrastructure's Sustainable Development, "Re-Private Hydrant Policy Be Received." Further, the council approved the private hydrant policy as presented.
Okay, second by Councilor McFadden. Any discussion? Other than saying thank you to bring this policy forward, it's been, will hopefully help us going forward with some of the questions or concerns that have been out there. Okay, so all those in favor? Anybody opposed? It's carried. Seven nine is report thirteen zero three two from the Director of Community Services. This is around our green vehicle and our green operating practices. Councilor Malkinson.
I move that this report from the Director of Community Services regarding green vehicle and green operating practices for municipal buildings policies be received. And further that the revised policies be approved as presented, subject to the thirty day review period.
Thank you, second by Councilor Kenny. Any comments?
Thank goodness. I took the time to have this referred to this meeting so that I could go over the changes that were made.
Good, so I'm glad that worked out for everybody, so all those in favor? Anyone opposed? It's carried. Seven ten is report thirteen zero five four, and this is regarding the Climate Action Revenue Incentive Program, the CARP report. Councilor Schum.
I want that report number thirteen dash zero five four from the Chief Financial Officer, Officer Reed, the Climate Action Revenue Incentive Program, CARP, report be received. And further that council approve the report and that staff proceed with ensuring that all of the reporting requirements are met by March eighth, twenty thirteen, in accordance with the provincial regulations.
Second by Councilor Parswell. Any question? Councilor Malkinson.
This is a late item, your worship, I was reading through it this morning as, as before the meeting, but maybe I could get a bit of a summary on it?
Sure, there were some timing implications, which is why it had to come forward, Jim?
Uh, yes, through your worship. This is the requirement to have a public report on how you have spent your CARP funding has been, and, and the various efforts you are taking under the Climate Action Partnership, has existed since we signed the, uh, the partners agreement. However, this is the first year that you either have to be, have reduced your emissions to nothing or purchase offsets. And so we did not realize that in addition to publishing the public report, we had to have already made the commitment to purchase the offsets by the eighth of March. We assumed that that was going to be in June sometime. But as it happens, we have to have a contract in place with the offset provider by March eighth. So that's what's brought the report forward today, is normally you would have seen this a little bit later, but that's why it's come forward.
Excellent. Well, I also stand to be corrected because I've been involved with this since day one and I always thought that it was climate action rebate incentive, not revenue.
It's a, it's a revenue incentive program, which is a different thing than a rebate, but if you can tell me how. Government branding is always cute.
Thank you, so we agree to this, we sign on to this, and then we put eighty-nine thousand dollars into a fund. And then the provincial government rebates us back eighty-nine thousand dollars, is that the gist of what's?
Not quite.
No, they, um, they give us eighty-nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-two dollars, which is the refund of the carbon tax you paid. And you purchase offsets for eighty-two thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. You come out seven grand ahead and you're carbon neutral.
So if we don't sign, don't pay. So if we don't sign, don't pay?
We don't get the eighty-nine.
But we don't spend the seventy-five, we don't spend the eighty-five though, do we?
No, that's correct.
But you don't get the eighty-nine back.
So by doing this, you're, you're, by doing this, you'll continue on with the goals of the community to be carbon neutral when you actually have net ahead.
We're up seven grand a year.
This year. It changes every year depending on your usage.
Whatever.
It's a good thing.
What you do about nothing, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it's, um, the reason it's a revenue incentive program, uh, is that it's meant to incent you to do what they want you to do, which has become carbon neutral.
So, Councilor Parslow.
Yeah, well, I think the questions that Councilor McFadden asked are important because essentially, I mean, I would never support, uh, becoming carbon neutral out of, sending money out if we didn't make out of it. I think we should strive to be carbon neutral, but I can't, the concept of buying it is apparent to me, but because we make money out of it, or even if it was not a material difference, I would probably still go along with it in support of, uh, the general concept, yeah.
Okay. Any other comments? Seeing now, all those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Moves a substitute bylaws, first bylaw under eight one is forty-one sixty for adoption. Councilor Kenny, second by Councilor Malkinson. All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Eight two is forty-one sixty-one for third reading and adoption. Councilor McFadden, Councilor Wilber. All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Eight three, report thirteen zero forty. Now, this is around zoning and, forty-one sixty-two for first two readings. This is, Councilor Kenny, second. Councilor Wilber, sorry, Councilor Kenny and then Councilor Wilber, second. Any comments? Okay, so all those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. It takes us to mayor's business. I just also want to mention, uh, around, I went at the LNG conference, how important was it to be there, the, the information that we received at that conference, uh, was incredible. As Councilor Kenny mentioned, it was nice to hear it from the horse's mouth, so to speak, the companies around the world, talking about the importance of British Columbia plays, uh, in the global markets around LNG and the possibilities that are there. But the one thing that I took out of that was the discussion around, you can't have one without the other, so to speak, was, um, they won't have the LNG plants in kidnap without all the work in northeast of British Columbia. And all the work in northeast of British Columbia will diminish, according to them, without the LNG plants. So it was quite an interesting message the way they portrayed it.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
That, did they talk about how they're going to energize the LNG plants?
Um, the premier, if I, if I remember correctly in the speech from the premier I'm from, Minister Coleman, was the issues around the shortage of energy. Their comments were in order to power all of the proposed LNG plants, you would need basically every megawatt that comes out of Site C would be specific just for that project over there. They put in the concept of how much power is going to need, so which is why they said that they are going to be looking at working with those companies around the possibility of using their actual products. So, um, the natural gas that will be in kidnap coming from the northeast to help power the plants to liquefy.
So Minister Coleman's saying that the power from Site C is sufficient for all four?
No, what, well, I'm sorry, the way I understood it was the amount of power that will come out of the proposed Site C dam, that's equivalent to the amount of power to run the proposed LNG plant.
The, the, and there's three others would need to be energized. Yeah, I always had a conversation with a, how can you, relative who's very high up in BC Hydro and, uh, yeah, the, the challenge will be that to, to find energy for the others and, and, was it, last question though, is there, um, was any discussion about the impact the shipping of LNG across the world would have on our home prices for gas in, or in Europe? Because some people are saying that if it's sold in Hong Kong, Malaysia, and so on, that it would become like a commodity, just like oil is right now and that we can say, kiss goodbye to, three or four dollar gas would be at twelve dollars and there's no way the provincial government can protect seniors and people on fixed incomes, uh, because of North America Free Trade Agreement and that we would, it would have a negative impact on small business and people on fixed income. And is any discussion about that?
There was.
Trying to remember, Councilor Kenny?
Yeah, they had some, they did have some graphs and they did have graphs on, on the cost and, uh, and it, and they did speak to that and it wasn't going to, it, it didn't sound like it was going to be a huge difference in cost because they were still throwing down, throwing around that three dollar number. That was with both, when, when the person from Korea talked and, uh, Japan talked.
The reason being from Korea, I mean, not to get too deep into it, I can pin someone up, but, uh, the reason being is the low commodity price here on top of the manufacturing process to LNG, on, on top of the transportation costs across the ocean, on top of the unloading fees at the downstream side, combined all that together brought it, you know, a dollar or two cheaper than what they're paying over there. So it made a business case with them, but if the commodity price went up too high in Canada, it's no longer a business case to ship over with them. So they, they were quite positive in fact, in order to make this work, our commodity has to stay relatively.
So I'm, so I'm more confused than ever now.
Right, I could do that.
Because, no, what you said makes perfect sense, but, uh, not wishing to inject politics into this discussion, but when I attended a Tristi Clark gathering not so long ago, I got the impression that we were going to be selling it at twelve dollars and look at all the extra revenue we were going to get. So what I'm hearing is to, to sell it, the price won't have to, we'd, we'd better not change too much, so I'm confused now about all of that, but don't wish to dwell on it.
No, I can explain that off, around a bit more because it's not the commodity, it would be the, the revenues off the basically taxation and tariffs that would be attached to it, not to the commodity itself. Anyway, um, we'll move on, get into a deep discussion on LNG. Um, Jim, was there anything else? I know we wanted to bring up CARP, but we've put that in our separate reports, was there anything else?
Nope, not, not on that, more of under mayor's business.
Okay. So on that, then we'll move forward to the diary.
And I'll ask, Duncan, he is here, come forward.
Good morning. This problem is, we're just garbage cans.
We can't see you back there.
So update on the Calvin Kirk Center, uh, just with the current status right now. GK Mechanical is still in the building, working on completing the building control system. They are linking in and, and working on programming. Uh, we, I've been speaking with our commissioning agent, they're planning on finalizing the commissioning in the next two weeks. So essentially everything's completed, the program is completed, they just have to make sure it actually does what it's supposed to. Uh, having said that, um, to this point, PBI continues to carry the construction insurance, look after the utility bills for the building, and the warranty period hasn't actually started yet because we haven't given them completion, just for council's information. Um, also at this point, the architect is finalizing the deficiency list and adding values to any items that haven't been completed by the current contractor. And, uh, once before, I began moving some donated furniture in and storing some of their materials on site. So that's our, our current status. Uh, moving forward, we actually have a, a new project manager, uh, taking on the second phase of this project, which is perimeter drainage in the, the basement completion. Uh, works out in our favor right now because we have the old project manager cleaning up, uh, the last parts of the, um, current construction or PBI's contract, and we have a new project manager who's, uh, been able to work on the new items coming forward, contracts for, uh, perimeter drainage, et cetera. So, um, she will be in, I'm sure, to speak with council at some point this morning. Uh, at this point, we're in the process of finalizing a perimeter drainage schedule with Sea Norman Trenching. Uh, between today and tomorrow, we'll have a series of meetings with Chad Norman and we will be going through, uh, just some of the, the scope of work and the plan. Um, Sean Dolan from our, uh, Public Works Department will be, uh, accompanying us as if there is some effective sidewalks and streets as we move forward, making sure we meet work safe requirements, sloping, and coming up with a plan that works for everybody. Uh, also at this point, the architect's working on the tender documents for the remaining interior construction we would like to release in the near future. I don't have a date, but they are very close to completion. That's all I have. Questions?
Excellent, thanks. Uh, no, more of a, kind of just a comment, I guess, so it's great to see it coming to completion, uh, with that one through, and I know prior to any, any construction taking place, I know we have a discussion there, that once we do have it, it would be great to be able to offer, uh, where the time permits, a couple of community tours, uh, prior to maybe there being more work around there with the heating rooms on, on stage. So if there happens to be a window there, we don't obviously want to slow down any progress, but if there happens to be a window, I would really like to, uh, be able to have a couple evenings to offer community tours because there's a lot of people out there that are very eager to see how far along it actually is. And I know we did that with the multiplex and it was quite successful, a lot of the updates.
There will be an opportunity, uh, at this point, we're just trying not to, uh, delay the current contractor from completion and once we're out of the building and we're moving on, we'll have some opportunity.
Exactly, no. But with that part of it, that first, I fully agree. Any questions for council?
You asked mine.
No. Okay, thanks a lot for the update. That takes us to the consent calendar, we do have one item there to consent. So, Councilor Schuman, seconded by Councilor Malkinson. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Updates, Jim, on the priorities chart.
Nothing new on the priorities chart, your worship?
Okay, thanks. And is there anybody signed up this week for the question answer period?
Not at all.
Okay, thank you. And so no committee of holes, we go to media question period, anything at this point? No? Not in the meeting? So, uh, Matt then will have a motion to recess the post. Councilor Malkinson, seconded by Councilor Kenny. And all those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you, everyone. We'll take five minutes then, if you're ready to go again.